Are y'all ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Richland County Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, September 8th, 2022. And I'm Jason Brannum, the Chair of the Commission. Staff, would you please confirm the following? That in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news media persons requesting notification and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as a reminder, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to County Council as to whether to approve or deny zoning map amendments and whether to amend the text of the county's land development code. County Council will conduct its own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments and text amendments on a future date to be published by the county. The Council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. So please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. And also, please take a note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Turn off or silence any cell phones. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. Applicants are allowed up to two minutes to make statements. Citizens signed up to speak are allowed up to two minutes each. Redundant comments should be minimized. Only addressed remarks to the Commission. Don't expect the Commission to respond to questions from the speakers in a back and forth style. That's not the purpose of this meeting. No audience or speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor our comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember the meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. Abuse of language is inappropriate, will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration out of recommendation while the Planning Commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Planning Department staff. And at this time, Mr. Price, could you go ahead and conduct the roll call vote of the Commission? Or just a roll call of the Commission?
Roll call. Serks. Taylor. Durant. Metz.
Here.
Frierson.
Yeah.
Johnson. Yonkey.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Brannum.
President, and thank you, Mr. Price. And again, thank you and welcome to our newer Commissioners, Mr. Serks, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Durant. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Apologize I missed the last meeting due to illness. Now to Agenda Item Number Three, which is additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Are there any from Commission or staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have
Price.
I would say one correction and one more of an edit to the request. On case an item seven under Consent Agenda 7B2. We have the acreage as 113.24 acres. That actual didn't include both parcels which were advertised and posted, so the actual acreage is a little more than 121. I can give you the exact acreage shortly once we get the agenda. Oh, excuse me, get the file, but it's actually about 121 acres.
All right. Any objection to that correction to the agenda? No objection? Anything else, Mr. Price?
And it was one other.
Okay, thank you.
And on, in your agenda package on the page 47. Under staff recommendation, it states that staff recommends approval. But you'll also note that on the discussion, it recommends disapproval. So the actual staff recommendation is for disapproval.
Which case is that?
That would be case 22-023 MA.
And on the section?
On page 47 within the, under the staff recommendation, where it says approval is actually should be disapproval.
All right, any objection to that correction? All right, no objection. Thing else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dennis, are you ready to go? Okay. All right. Here. Mr. Dennis.
Sir, I move we send, on the consent agenda, we send cases 22-019. 22-022. And the road names to County Council for approval, and we pull 22-006. 22-021. 22-024. 22-025. And 22-026 for discussion.
Okay, so those map amendment requests would be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that any of the Commissioners would like to have pulled so that we discuss those matters? Hey. So, no other requests to modify the consent agenda? And so do we have a second of Mr. Dennis's motion? Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Price, you need us to go back over which cases will be pulled again?
Um, if, actually, it may be easier if you could just identify the cases that will still remain on the consent agenda.
Okay, so I have that that would remain would be 22-019. 22-022. Is that right, Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. So those would remain on the consent agenda. And ordered to Council with a recommendation for approval. All right, Mr. Dennis or Staff, Mr. Price or Staff, if you could take the vote on the motion.
Those in favor? Serks.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Durant.
Hi.
Metz.
Hi.
Frierson.
Hi.
Johnson. Yonkey.
Hi.
Dennis.
Hi.
Brannum.
Hi. Motion passes, thank you. Next up to item four, approval of minutes from prior meetings. Staff provided the Commission with copies of the transcript of the Commission's June 7th, 2021 meeting. Just those members present for the meeting should vote on a motion to approve those minutes, that transcript for that meeting. Those that are with us today who were there then include Brannum, Frierson, Dennis, Yonkey, and Taylor. Am I missing anybody else that was at June 2021? It's on the Commission today. So the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the June 7th, 2021 minutes as provided by staff.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, thank you. We have a second.
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Frierson. Staff, would you please take the vote?
There'll be just the members that were on the planning commission during the June meeting.
That's right, the five.
Um, Brannum.
Yes.
Dennis.
Hi.
Yonkey.
Hi.
Frierson.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Passes. All right, now go ahead and move on to item five of our agenda, which is the remapping, restart, and text amendment proposal process update. Just a quick review and then a little bit of a map ahead. Last year, staff presented and proposed full replacement of land development code. After review of this, Commission is, by this Commission and some modifications to the drafts along the way, County Council voted to adopt the new replacement code. Included in the new land development code is a new set of zoning districts. Every parcel of land in the county that is not inside a city or town has a zoning designation assigned by the county. With the adoption of this new code, each parcel must be assigned a new zoning designation. County staff prepared a draft map. Earlier this year, the Planning Commission was in the midst of reviewing and considering revisions to the draft map and receiving input from the public when County Council voted to direct staff to restart the map drafting process. The Planning Commission and county staff restarted the mapping process and began discussing potential changes to and ramifications of amendments to the land development code. The new baseline starting point for the remapping process became the zoning district translation table found in the newly adopted land development code. One important process or element that will continue to influence the map drafting is the process of proposing amendments to the text of the newly adopted land development code. Anyone who's reviewed the agenda for today's meeting can see there are several motions that relate to completing the new zoning map and to recommendations to Council to amend the text of the land development code in various ways. We've got a lot going on today, so let me try to say a little bit more about why our agenda is ordered as it is. We're trying to balance priorities and be considerate to as many of you as we can. We have several individual zoning map amendment cases on the agenda today. We will hear anyone from the public who wants to speak for or against those specific applications on a case-by-case basis, as we call them today. Before that, we're going to offer an opportunity for public input as to the broader ongoing countywide zoning map drafting and the land development code text amendment process. If you have input as to the motions listed under item nine of today's agenda, now would be the time to offer that. The Commission's goal is to finalize a draft zoning map instead of recommended text amendments on or before our November 7th, 2022 meeting. Between now and then, we are also scheduled to meet October 3rd, and we expect to permit for additional input at that time. Thanks for your patience. Hopefully that was helpful information. And now on to item number six of our agenda, which is the public input regarding the land development code remapping process and proposed land development text amendments. So Mr. Dennis, do you have the list of names for persons signed up to speak on that?
Yes, Chair.
All right, so Mr. Dennis, we'll call the names one at a time, and just a reminder to each speaker, you'll have two minutes to speak. Staff will be keeping the time there, and I'm gonna try to keep you pretty, pretty close to that. We do have two different stands that you can come down to on both sides of the auditorium or of chambers. And please, again, make sure to state your name and address before you start speaking. And Mr. Dennis, whenever you're ready, just call the first name.
First person we have signed up to speak is Melinda Kelly.
Good afternoon. My name's Melinda Kelly. I'm with the Finkel Law Firm, 1201 North Main, Columbia, and 4,000 Faber Place Charleston. I'm representing two clients. Some of my comments would have had to do with things that are not involved in the motions, and so I think what I'm gonna do is hold off on those. And to address the ones that are in your motions today, one of my clients has seven properties that are zoned RU currently. We're very happy with five of, of the potential outcomes based on your motion and based on what would happen ultimately with County Council. There are two. One in particular is an RU spot, I'm gonna call it, between two more intensive zonings. And so I was just thinking that if there's a way to make a more comparable change for ones that are next to or sandwiched in between higher intensity zoning, that that would be great. I can give you the address, or we can talk about it later. But so the three categories that you have for RU, most of those we were very happy with. Also, he has three mobile home, manufactured home properties now, and we were very happy that you have recommended those to be R2, I believe. At one point, they were R3, and we were a little concerned. We really wanted R1 so that the density wouldn't be so high, but R2 would be okay. That same client has two other properties, but again, those are not part of your motions today. So there's, there are two industrials. One is M1 and one is LI. And, and then another client has an OI property that's not part of your motions. He's had a 40-year-long medical practice there, and so we just want to make sure, or request that there's a zoning that will be comparable. It's hard to tell on the map because of the streets are not there, and it's one little small piece of property. So when the timing is right, we'll address those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Next, we have Jennifer Manke.
I'm Jennifer Manke, and I live at 320 Clearview Drive, Hopkins. For the benefit of the new people on the Planning Commission, I just wanted to give a really brief outline of how long we've been talking about this. This all began with the sewer project about seven years ago, when we began to come to every County Council meeting, because we knew that the addition of sewer out in our rural, beautiful rural area would lead to development. Back when this room said uniquely rural, uniquely urban, we wanted to save the uniquely rural aspect of Lower Richland. Land is finite, and we, and in the process, also, I got to know the people who have been in our area since Reconstruction, their families, and came to love those really well-spoken people that would, little old ladies that would come up here to talk. I am not from here, but I love the rural character and the last rural character of our county. And so the process started with the sewer plan, which, of course, we lost, and continues on to this day, passionate people who want to preserve the character and the pride that we have in having a national park. We don't want anything abutting up to that. We don't want anything threatening that. We want to present a nice gateway for people who come from all over the world to see our national park, but especially from every state. So the idea of losing all of our beautiful rural land, somebody going through neighborhood after neighborhood to get to our national park is not how national parks are really supposed to look, especially when they're about nature. So I hope that you'll understand that this is not a new thing that just started. The people who care have been doing this for a long time. Thank you.
Next, we have Frances. Cannot make out the last name.
Sorry, I need to go back to elementary school for my cursive. I'm Frances Ergle at 1925 Marina Road, Irma, South Carolina. Your charge of this Commission is very clear. It was given by direction of the County Council. Our esteemed Council member, Bill Malinowski, gave you a charge to look at a study for carrying capacity before you all, before they take a vote. If you need, and I'll just remind, it seemed to disappear from the public record, nor the conveyance of that charge to you all has seemed to disappear. But it all takes a village, right? Definition of carrying capacity. It's the number of organisms in an area that can support without being degraded. There's no expiration date here to get this right. You've done the fun part of your job to look at math. The next part is looking at the science and looking at the environmental socio-economic impacts and And looking at the environmental socio economic impacts and public health issues. And I think you've got us, you you've got a job ahead of you. Mind you, two minutes presenters is not expert testimony. We look forward to your panel of experts. You're gonna subpoena for testimony. We look forward to citizen advisory group to give you input on socio economic issues to inform your process. We're all looking very forward to that part of your your job. In twenty fifteen, we got a huge wake up call. We heard testimony from floodwaters rolling down like justice in our community. That carrying capacity was met. We don't want that again. We lost neighbors. We lost friends. We lost family. Um, one last reminder, in your role as a sacred public trust here on this commission, not to be taken lightly. Ask officials I met with in Flint, Michigan, who took a sidebar. They took the easy route. They missed some steps. It ended their careers. It ended their political aspirations.
Thank you, Ms. Er.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Sloan. Sloan?
Good afternoon, Commission. I'm Mike Sloan. I reside at fourteen thirty Wonder Drive. I'm here today on behalf of all property owners. Uh, our zoning process enables us to look at properties and say, okay, if we're gonna change the zoning here, let's get this, let's get the owner's permission. All right, we've got his permission. Let's let's move forward. We look at that property. We take that property into consideration one at a time. That's a very good zoning process, not what we have here. We have a blanket zoning. And in the process of it, when you go to buy a piece of property, you buy it with the zoning character that is that is there in label with it. Will it be rule? HI, whatever. You're there with those rights given to you and granted to you by that property. And then the government steps in and says, oh, no, we're gonna change those rights. We're gonna take those rights away that you have maybe these. Folks, property rights are the most sacred thing we have other than our family. And you're dabbling with property rights. And you're dabbling in something known as, I I don't care what anybody says, is a taking. You're taking these property rights. You're not making things better. You're taking it. You're making people more infuriated. We need to step back a minute, take a breath. Because if we don't, we're gonna find ourselves as as the count as as a county in trouble down the road. With lawsuits and things they don't want. Because we have violated property rights. We have violated the constitution at that point, and we can't allow that. If we are a government of the people, for the people and by the people, constitution has to come first. And we're violating that with property rights. Thank you.
Next, we have David Williams.
Good afternoon. I'm David Williams. I live at seven camp, excuse me, seven Candlewood Lane in Columbia. Uh, members of the commission and staff. On June second of this year, I addressed some concerns regarding the new LDC. And would like to reiterate these concerns today. I bought residential property in Lower Richland only after reviewing applicable zoning regulations. And finding desired restrictions and requirements of RSLD. That is, I found the zoning stability that I needed to protect the value of my property. Mr. Price was kind enough to send me an email on July the eighteenth of this year addressing some of my concerns that I sent to council, to my council, county council representative, Ms. Newton. And Mr. Price's message included removing multifamily dwellings from R two and R three. Please implement this. Permitting only single family dwellings in R two and R three. Please implement this. Removing all manufactured homes from R two. Please implement this. Regarding reinstating the district RS dash LD, residential, single family, low density. His discussion did not satisfy my concerns because the term single family needs to be specifically defined. And the new zone R two would allow higher density housing than currently allowed in the older RSLD. I request that the old RSLD zoning category be reinstated for those properties currently zoned in that category. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, we have Jim Edwin Ewing.
Good afternoon, Councilman and Councilwoman. Uh, my name is Jim Ewing. And my address is five Trotwood Drive, Columbia. And my wife and I retired to Columbia in nineteen ninety nine. And we knew this would probably be the last home that we would ever buy. So we rented for a year. Looked around the greater Columbia area. Looked at location, designs of houses, and we also looked for zoning protection. Uh, we desire to live in a neighborhood that had only conventional detached similar, single family homes. And we did not want alternative housing such as mobile homes, duplexes, triplexes, multiplexes. These alternative homes are very appropriate and necessary. But they need to be in in appropriate locations. They don't need to be in established in an established neighborhood and change the whole uh the whole um feeling of the neighborhood. A house is the largest investment for most people. And existing homeowners in conventional detached family, single family homes, neighborhoods should not be required to allow for appropriate, excuse me, to allow for alternate housing. Now, this housing should be placed somewhere else and not destroy the character of our neighborhoods. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, we have Mark Hershberger.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting me return. I am still concerned, as is my wife, that we have lived for forty one years in an address that is in a, in a very lovely, um harmonious residential area of detached, single family, conventional houses. My principal concern, gentlemen, uh madam, is what are you gonna do with manufactured housing and multifamily, however that might be defined? I'm concerned about the effect on a harmonious, stable neighborhood, actually a group of several neighborhoods. We're worried about our quality of life and incidentally, the value of our properties. What I would ask the commission to undertake, whether tonight or some other time at your convenience. Could we please have some clarification to the public regarding the status and the definitions, the definitions of manufactured housing as they affect the code? The clarification of the current status of multiplex, duplex, quadruplex, triplex type dwellings. And um just based on what we've seen this evening, a clarification, please, of the proposed amendment of twenty six dash three point one F five, which in the R two zoning uh pertains to cluster development. If you could let us know, please, what's going on in zoning category R two with regard to clusters? We worry when we hear about clusters, that starts to sound too much like multifamily. But please, gentlemen and and madam, take care of the quality of our life. Maintain the values of our property and maintain our style of life. I thank you very much for letting me come back.
And lastly, we have Sarah Giran.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, ma'am. Um, forgive my ignorance on the matter. I've been in Israel and I just recently came back. I'm a property owner. I live on the eight thousand block of Monticello Road. And one of my favorite quotes is by Edmund Burke. Evil triumphs when good men do nothing. I'm not calling you evil. But perhaps that requires intention and knowing what's gonna happen when you set about a purpose. Um, I don't know yet. I'm pretty ignorant of what's going on. I received one notice um when I was in Israel, I think about what was going on with the zoning. I I need to find out what my land is owned right now. I don't know. But I wanna just tell you a little bit about what the ramifications will be for me as a property owner. And ultimately, it's not my property. It's God's property. And I live in a a great nation who has a wonderful constitution, who has given us property rights and liberty. Um, and I'm here to defend that. So I grew up in a mobile home. My mom always dreamt of having land. She grew up in Chicago. And when I was ten, she was able to buy seven acres near where I live. Um, when I was twenty something, I also bought land, about five acres uh where I live right now. And it's a beautiful piece of land that I thank God for every day. It's um not paid for yet, and I hope it will be in ten years or so. But what happens now affects everybody. So you know, I don't know if you've made up your minds, if you're still open to suggestion or wisdom from the outside, but this is an important matter. You're affecting lots of lives. We moved out to the country so we would be alone. So we would have the beauty that we had the right to have, that God gave us. Um, I'm gonna do some more research on what you're proposing, but it sounds like single family homes are being changed to multifamily. Um, homes and districts are changing and maybe apartments are coming. And what does that mean? That means a lot. There's there's a lot going on that you guys are probably a lot smarter than than we are as far as um realizing the the effect of that. Or maybe we don't know yet. But there is an effect, and I'm one of those effects. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Eric, that was everybody for the public participation.
Come down.
My name is Les Tweet. I'm at one 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 Saratoga Road, Irma, South Carolina. One thing I wanna bring up in particular was on April the fifth, there was a county council meeting. And four motions were passed unanimously. And they requested studies. Okay, because in the R two and R three, as other people have spoken about, the density changes to these neighborhoods that are well established and everything is gonna be a nightmare, especially if you have properties that are in very desirable locations, because to wipe out one house and put in duplex, duplexes, triplexes and quads would be real simple for views, maybe over the lake or other desirable things. And the builders are gonna go after that. So to help this come out, as they're saying, a well thought out process. There was a impact studies requested of staff, and yet never has been a word at any meeting whatsoever that staff has ever even begun to work on these things. And one of the issues were like water treatment and water supply, drainage, traffic, schools, public transportation, law enforcement, environment, and how it affects the neighborhoods overall. That was one motion. Another motion was addressing the idea of well, you're saying the old code was no good. They'd had issues, but it was requested. Well, what are the issues? If there's like three or four issues, they were never presented what they are that they couldn't be addressed individually without reassessing everybody and changing, you know, thousands and thousands of people's lives. The other had to do with uh in the area I live in, as many of these people may also, we all have septic and well. All right, we don't have city water and we don't have public sewer systems. And by but increasing all these impacts, DHEC has requirements for things. How are you gonna let these people come in and put in all these houses and stuff? And there isn't even the the earth can't handle supplying the water or disposing of of the waste material. And the fourth one that was put in and passed, okay?
Tweet, that's that's your time. I'm sorry.
All right.
Um, anyone else in the crowd who wanted to speak on this matter? Yes, sir. Please come on down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is a it's a pleasure for me to be here and to see you are here, even though it's I'm a new welcome to to your job. My name is Walter Jones and I'm from Hopkins, South Carolina, ten oh five Brown Road. I grew up there. And and my grandfather passed when I was about three years old. And he always used to tell me about generational wealth. They pass it on down to the family member. And I spent twenty four years in the military. When I came back to South Carolina, I couldn't wait to get back home. But I'm kinda shocked now what's going on. Now I have at least twelve acres of land. I'm the grandson. And my oldest one that living out of eight head. But my sisters and brothers, with eight of us. And you know, and I told my grandfather, I was promised when I was a little boy, I can remember. When he say generational wealth and he explained to me that mean you the Lord say, take it on down to your grandkids, already down to generation to generation. And I came back, it was a western house down there. That's polluting the place. Now they wanna put a a dump down there. And I said, now they wanna put multiple house, family and homes. What I am, I'm not a family. I don't have a family. I I wanna talk about my family. What they gonna do? Since we got all of that land, now we gonna come down and say multiple family. But to me, what does it mean? What does what does the gentleman get out that built these houses? That you can stick your arm out the window and weigh and shape pain with your neighbor. And you know, and I don't understand when we say we belong, cuz I'm a taxpayer myself. I don't miss paying taxes. They say it was ours, but not anymore. I can't tell my grandchildren and everything. I don't own it anymore because you can knock at my door and tell me you done recall this, you no longer can have this, or you no no long can live like this.
Mr. Jones, that's your time. Anyone else in chambers that wants to come down? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. My name is Donna Cole. I reside at two oh nine Amenity Road in Chapin. My understanding is, and part of this process in your review, we're making motions of recommended amendments to be added to a running ledger. And in the June sixth meeting, I just wanted to confirm that the motions that were presented at that time uh are still existent as far as the removal of townhouse dwellings in R four. Um, and the as to the removal of two family, three family and four family dwellings in R two, three and four. Is my understanding those are still on the ledger? And these motions today will be additional recommendations that will then be evaluated as a whole for approval. So I I guess I'm asking you a question if those still exist in the ledger as running motions.
Been not normally in the question and answer setup here, but again, check, check the county's website, uh that the running ledger is on the county's website.
Okay, so we should be able to see that there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, anyone else? Uh, yes, sir.
Oh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is David Jackson, twenty one seventy eight Conglee Road, Eastover. Uh, I'm a long lifetime uh resident of Richland County. I grew up in the public school systems. Uh, I have, if you go to Hopkins, Gazzanich, Stover, someone's, someone, ninety percent of the people related to me one way or the other. Um, I have an issue, uh like the man said about passing on property to your family. Uh, one of the things that's disturbing to me was the fact that um I noticed in this code y'all have you currently can have three quarters of an acre of property to build a house on. But I met with some people and was told that that three quarters of acres is going up to three acres. So if I wanted to give my child or children some property, I'm going from three quarters of an acre to three acres. And if there was an inheritance property, you're going to seven acres. And I'm just trying to figure out as I asked in the meeting. I mean, where do you pull out three acres? Where you pull out seven acres? I mean, if if it's mine, I paid for it. I wanna give it to my children. I should be I want to give it to my children. I should be able to give to my family and my children what I want that I have worked to own. So I'm just, I'm just kind of want an understanding of at what point in time do we make a decision for our property? You know, not necessarily, I mean, some of y'all I know, some I don't. But my understanding is when do we as individuals decide what we want to do for our property? Because I'm, I'm like the man said, Western House, Square D, McIntyre, anybody, the dump, somebody can make a decision. They want to put a dump right down. You, you putting 1,700 houses in the Hopkins location era, area. The one has discussed another high school in 45 years of 50 years other than Hopkins. So you, you bringing in the infant, you bringing in the schools, you're bringing in the people, you're bringing in. And we talking about 1,700 houses, average home has two cars. We talking about probably an additional 300, 400 cars. So I mean, so what are we going to do with all of that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Fryerson. David Jackson, is that right? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernard Wilson. I live at 11 oh four Goodman Road in Gaston. Been there for 24 years. Built my home. I have approximately uh, 10 acres. Have some other property in the Eastover area. This United States was founded on biblical principles. Joshua 1 and 3 says, every place that the soul of your foot have trod, I've given it unto you. Property cannot be reproduced. Developers can come into our community and build multi homes on a small stench of land, just like, uh, Mr. Uh, David Jackson says. We have air property. We can not give it to our uh, siblings based on the, um, rezoning and we have where we could. But I had 10 children. I could give them 10 acres, at least. These nine of them, I could give them an acre to themselves. This thing that we are doing now is disregarding the people that had been living on this property for many, many years. Our children, many of our children may not want to live in the area that we are presently living in. But just the fact that we could give it to them if we wanted to, it shouldn't mean a lot to you all as well as unto us. I'm asking you to reconsider the proposed, I, I know a lot of the effort has been made already. But it can be changed. You can look at what we have now and go back to that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, what was your first name?
Anyone else in chambers who wanted to speak on these topics? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Hope you, uh, stick around or, or watch online for the rest of the meeting. But, uh, if there's any who want to, who want to leave chambers, you're welcome to do so right now. We can pause for just a quick moment. All right, well, uh, we will move now to item number seven on the agenda, the items that have been removed from the consent agenda. And we'll consider the individual map amendment applications. On first property. Sure. Well, I guess staff, we need to have you go ahead and present the case. I'm sorry.
Thank you. The first item is case 22 dash 006 MA. The applicant is Jared Moniki, Moniki. Um, the location is at the end of Ottawa Boulevard and Barn Street. The property comprises 72.78 acres, um, and the existing zoning is split between general, commercial, light industrial and rural. The applicant is requesting to rezone those parcels to RMMD, which is residential multifamily medium density. Um, staff's recommendation um, is for disapproval of the request as a proposed rezoning is not consistent with, with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan um, for rural large lot designation. Um, as it would not meet these requirements. So staff recommends disapproval.
Any questions for staff before we hear from applicants or others here to speak on this case? Um, did, did everyone on the commission, Mr. Price, do you know, did everyone on the commission receive a copy of this letter from Sunoco Company? This was in my packet.
They were all included in the package for the.
Okay. Um, did you have a chance to review the letter?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, um, but you have made it part of the record for this application. Is that right? Okay, great. All right, if there's no questions for staff up front, if we, uh, Mr. Dennis, if you'll go ahead and call, uh, applicant.
All right, we have Leighton Lord here to speak. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Jared Moniki with Landmark is going to speak first. If he can take two minutes and I'll take two minutes and just kind of do a summation of the seven factors for a map amendment.
Usually, we, oh, the two applicant, but I, I think we could applicant, favor of the application?
I'll be in favor and he'll be the applicant.
All right.
And we have, uh, materials that, um, staff said we could hand out.
Okay. Staff, want to hand that out to the, to the commission, please?
We're not sure how to do that with the shields. And one other thing, we didn't, weren't aware of the Sunoco letter if that involves our application.
Staff have a copy of that letter? Yes. Go ahead, yeah. All right, so tell us your name and your address, sir.
Yeah, Jared Moniki. Uh, I, I reside at 315 Ocony Street in Athens, Georgia.
Okay.
And I'm the applicant here. Um, I'm here today representing, uh, Landmark Properties, as Leighton mentioned. Who is a, uh, who's a national developer of, of, uh, multifamily housing, whether that be university focused housing, uh, single family for rent housing or multifamily housing. The, the site that we have in front of us today is currently vacant. Um, and, and primarily the reason for that is just simply that, uh, most of it is wetlands, most of it is floodplain. So, um, the landmark and the landowner are somewhat working together to rezone this property to a residential medium density use, um, to make use of the land that is not wetlands or floodplain. Um, and we feel like this, this is consistent with neighboring zonings. Uh, the RMMD classification is not only the, you know, parcels next door to this property, but is, uh, essentially also consistent with the density that's found. While it's not, doesn't show up on the report, it shows up, uh, as the city of Casey planning, um, so it doesn't show up, but um, very similar housing that was also developed by Landmark roughly 15 years ago. Um, is, is also next door. Um, and then the University Foundation actually owns the, the other adjoining land to the west and south. So, um, anyway, you know, the, the primary issue I, I think that we've run into is obviously that this, the zoning portrays that it would be a lot of units. We don't have any intention of developing a lot of units. You'll see somewhat in the back of the, the pamphlet. Uh, the site plan is, is curved around to fit floodplains and wetlands and preserve that rural large lot feel um, that, that currently exists vacantly. So, um, right. Thank you for.
All right, thank you.
Excuse, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Price.
Quick statement, um, I just kind of want to set the record straight that normally, I will say almost all the time, we don't encourage in the distribution of any, um, pamphlets or maps or any depiction of what is proposed to go on a site. That is unless it is a planned development, um, application, because that's typically more site specific. And so you want to take a look at those. Um, we don't do that because, um, I think, as everyone knows, each zoning designation allows for a multitude of uses. And that because we're not, um, contractually rezoning property, you can't hold them to any specific, um, use within that zoning designation, nor can you hold them with any type of, um, depiction that they present to you. So normally we do not ask for those to be presented, um, to the planning commission. And it's the same thing we do with county council.
All right, sound like maybe misunderstanding there, Mr. Lord. Um, yeah, we've got, we got four factors that, uh, Rich County ordinances require us to consider and individual map amendment application. So, uh, that's what we should consider.
Okay.
Mr. Lord.
And again, I, I, I agree with Mr. Price. We were just showing you what was built next door and what they intend to build. It's not been approved yet. So, um, that, we think this plan is actually very consistent with the rural nature of this property because of the 74 acres, only about 30 some are going to be built on. Forty are necessitated to be kept open with really large buffers because of the wetlands and the floodplain. So this is going to be a very low density, very rural compatible development. Is it compatible with the area usage? Yes, some of the parcels in this plot are already zoned RMMD. Property next door is RMMD. It's, this is exactly what this area is doing. And nothing else can really be built there because of the floodways and the flood zones. You have to come in and build a creative mixed use property and work around the floodways. Otherwise, it's going to stay vacant, just like it has. Um, so we believe this is one of the only viable economic uses. Are there suitable public facilities? We have will serve letters for everything. As you all know, this is by an existing facility, so it is very easy to serve, um, in, in all ways and very good access. Uh, will it create adverse effects on the natural environment? No. Um, we're going to leave almost 40 acres of this vacant. Um, they're very wide buffers that have to be built because of the wetlands. Um, and it won't contribute to stormwater and other issues that, that, that could be a factor. And is it appropriate for the use? We believe it is because this is already what's going on in that use. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's sign it. All right, having heard from those in favor, uh, are, are there now any questions or comments, uh, for staff? Yo, could you talk a little bit about, um, the comprehensive plan for that area being rural, large lot, future land use designation in, in light of art zoning?
Yes, sir. Um, every so often we're going to come across, um, a request where the, the comprehensive plan recommendations, something, it really may not seem like it matches the area to some degree. Um, regardless of whether it be in this particular case, whether it be residential or industrial. Um, remember that when we were adopting the comprehensive plan, a lot of those designations were broadly, uh, um, I guess you broadly painted in areas. Um, it is times like this is when we have an opportunity to kind of zero in on an area and really make a determination on whether that was the appropriate designation for that area. And in some cases, and we probably haven't done this enough, in some cases, if is the decision of the planning commission, ultimately county council to go against those recommendations of the comprehensive plan, that we go back and revisit that area to maybe apply the more appropriate designation to it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Price. Yeah, I mean, comprehensive plans, one out of four factors that, that we as a planning commissioner ask to consider for these map amendments. So thank you for that insight. All right, any question or any motions?
Mr. Chair, also, I do have a copy of the letter that you referenced.
What'd you say?
I do have a copy of the letter that was submitted to you, to the planning commission members from Sunoco.
Okay.
Um, I know you had asked if I had a copy of it, but I do have one now.
Okay. And, uh, the issue with providing Mr. Lord with a copy? Okay.
So discussion about this, I understand that it doesn't make the comprehensive plan. But when you're looking at it, somebody's trying to do something with the land out there other than just sitting there. And we do have the comprehensive plan review coming up and there are instances kind of where it meets, but it just doesn't, this doesn't make the comprehensive plan. Um, you know, I I'm really looking at the comprehensive plan and I like to follow it as much as I can. Um, but maybe this is a good thing. I mean, those wetlands are protected. They're going to be protected. You can't build on wetlands. Um, so I don't know the acreage of those wetlands. So I mean, it might be a good idea to get some more housing down in there for people. Um, any other commissioners?
I'm sorry, did somebody speak up? I was just going to say on paper, yeah, you, you I'm plants rural large lot, but then it's, it's currently zoned M1. Um, and there, there is a fair amount of M1. That's, it's pinched in, uh, by the city of Casey. It's currently zoned M1. So, um, that's, that, that surely is also not, uh, in harmony with the rural large lot. Uh, kind of broad stroke map, uh, that's in the comprehensive plan for this area. And, uh, there is a fair amount of RMM right into the heart of our soul. Uh, staff, what do we got? Just, just to the south, is that? Is that also the city of Casey is wrapping around like that? Okay. Uh, to the south and east, I guess, if, if north is up, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right. I need additional information or chair will entertain a motion otherwise?
Chair, uh, further discussion, I just want to make sure I understand from staff that the, the difference here or, or the problem here is that it doesn't conform to the comprehensive plan in that the comprehensive plan has it as a, uh, just a rural, large lot area and the, the, uh, application is to bring more residential units in, in there. That is.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Price and Mr. Drant. Mr. Yonkey.
It'd be hard to ask staff to pull up the Richland maps, this area, just look at it better in context. On the printed map on page six, it does look I, I see M1 here with the RHMD. If we may, no change to this. If we made no change to this, you could say that would be M, M1. And more manufacturing could develop there without needing any zoning change. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Here, I'd be willing to make a motion of approval based on it's the character of the neighborhood as it is now, looking at the total map. It's what we see there. Neighborhood, purple there. And at the zone now, another manufacturer could show up right back there along wetlands. So this use of more housing, especially when we're in a housing crisis, doesn't seem like the worst thing to me. So to go against staff recommendation, I'd say because the character of it seems to fit as it currently stands.
Okay. We, we have a motion. Is there a second? I'm sorry, what was that? Okay, let's see if we get a second on the motion and then we can have some additional discussion. All right, we have a second from Commissioner Metz and Mr. Johnson, please.
Didn't you raise the issue of the residential around there? Is there a neighborhood association in that area and have they weighed?
Price, have you heard from any neighborhood association there?
At this time, we have not heard from any.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Again, just assuming Mr. Price saying we've not heard anything, I was notice was given to those communities.
Yes. If we, we use our typical notifications, which we send out mailouts to adjacent properties within a certain radius of the, of the parcels that are subject to the request. And we also post a property and also we advertise it in newspaper.
Mr. Taylor.
Oh, the Sonoco letter concerning that, I think even, you know, part of the opposition said, should it get approved? I don't know, can that even be imposed on the applicant?
I mean, we don't, we don't usually look for commitments from the applicants kind of as a condition to approval. But Mr. Price, do you want to let weigh in on the, the history of that kind of a practice?
Well, typically the planning commission really looks at the, looks at the request, you know, also the recommendations of staff as compared to comprehensive plan amongst your discussion on whether you feel the use is appropriate. Normally, when it gets to county council level, the council representative that, that represents that area will often determine if they feel a, a community meeting is necessary or how they want to reach out to their constituents regarding a request.
That helpful? Further discussion?
Let's share just one more clarification. As I'm looking at the map, the purple area is already existing zone residential. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the colors aren't the same as what we have in our packet to maybe staff can just confirm as far. Are you talking about the digital map that we're looking at on the screen?
On the screen.
Yeah.
That buffs up against the, the, the property.
Staff, can you confirm that?
The purple that you see that's east of these, the large track would be similar to the brown that you have in your package represents RMHD.
RM?
HD, residential multifamily. I'm sorry, MD, excuse me. Residential multifamily, medium density.
Okay, thank you.
But Mr. Chairman, the, the primary access would not be coming from those areas, it'd be coming through the industrial area.
We don't usually know or discuss that at, at this stage, but Mr. Price, do you have any information on access?
You're, you're correct. Normally, we don't look at the development of the site. However, looking at, looking at the roads that connect to this property, that there seem to be a couple of options that would be available either from the industrial side along Ottawa or along maybe Raleigh Street and Barn Street that were located within your residential area, residential area. I believe that's also known as Arthetown. So there would be a number of options that they have to, to access the property.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Discussion, anything else before we take the vote? Okay, Mr. Price, if you'll please take the vote.
Those in favor of the motion for approval of case 22 dash 006 MA?
Mr. Price, I'm sorry. Ms. Frierson.
Motion to approve. A reason to go against staff recommendation would be, I believe it does fit the character that's currently there. Our end.
Okay, thanks. So yeah, motion to send case 22 dash 006 MA to council with the recommendation of approval. And that was seconded by Mr. Metz, I believe. All right, thank you, Mr. Price.
So those are favorite of case 22 dash 006 MA for approval. Sirks?
Hi.
Taylor?
Hi.
Durant?
Hi.
Metz?
Hi.
Frierson?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Yonkey?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
All right, so motion passes.
All right, thank you. And again, we're recommending bodies, so the case will now be with county council. And next case is case 22017 MA. Mr. Price?
As you just stated, the next item was case 22 dash 017 MA. The applicant is Chandler Roy. The applicant is requesting to rezone 121.52 acres along Farrell Road from heavy industrial HI to sink residential, single family, medium density, which is RSMD. Staff's recommendation is for approval of this request. And I'll read through my conclusion. The proposal resounding would be consistent with the comprehensive plan for an economic development center corridor as identified in the future land use designation. The plan recommends employment uses integrated to adjacent to a medium and high density residential uses that are secondary to employment uses. This among some of the other reasons staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Hey, Dennis.
Yes, we have the applicant Chandler Roy.
Good afternoon. My name is Chandler Roy with Pulte Homes. I live at 217 River Club Road, Lexington, South Carolina. We've looked at this property a couple of times as Mr. Price stated, it's 121.8 acres. Two different TMS numbers. We are asking for RSMD. When you look at that zoning, when we talked about the different zonings in the county, that zoning allows for about 620 units. We are proposing 331 lots, so roughly about, you know, give or take half of what the zoning allows for these two specific tracks. Looking at the general area around there, we're not flipping the script by any means. You'll have communities like Brookhaven, some other residential communities in the general area. As Mr. Price spoke, this does follow the, the economic plan for this area. So we, we just ask for your consideration and have to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for the applicant?
When you gave your address, did you say Lexington?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm confused about. Is the property right on the border of Lexington County and Richland County?
No, man, that's where I live.
Okay, you just.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, anything else for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tombo Milken.
Melikan.
You good?
Chair, that's all we had signed up.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Price, have you got, I'm just wondering if that PDD property to the east across the railroad track from this parcel, is the, is the density or the lot sizes over there comparable generally, would you say, with the requested residential district?
Going by this, when this case previously was, was presented to staff from a kind of a lot size, potentially they may be, some of the lots may need to be smaller than what the MD designation, the minimum requirements for the MD would be. And it looks like the density may be even a little higher. As the homes are pretty, I wouldn't say packed in there, but they're relatively close to each other.
Tire where?
I was looking at the, the number of homes in the area along that PDD and also on the, I guess you could say the separation between the homes. Looks like this would be, that, that area in the PDD is a lot denser. And a lot sizes a little smaller than what the minimum requirements would be in the RSMD.
And I see a note where the city of Columbia is labeled above Hobart Road. How, how is the city limits, how are they delineated here on this map? Of Hobart Road?
I'm not sure the city is not in this area. I'm not sure why that's there. That may be. Sure, that's a parcel of their own or utility, but the city is not in this area.
Have to pull the map up again for this one.
On the, on the west side of the railroad track toward all the way over to 77, there's not currently much residential zoning there, is there?
No, sir.
Had some similar, similar zoning to the east, but not so much in the other surrounding areas.
So the proposed request matches that of Plantation Parkway, is that right?
Taylor.
I'm sorry. Is that correct? Is the same as what's on, uh, looks like Rose Haven Lane, Plantation Parkway? That little section?
Let's give me, yes, sir.
Mr. Yonkey?
Question regarding the economic, economic development corridor that we see this as a part of in the map. Railroad tracks, I know it's a broad stroke, but it seems like the railroad tracks break this up between what's neighborhood and what's economic development? Presidential? At a type of economic impact, you know, building up the area?
Which one are we looking at, sir?
The site in question, it overlaps with the economic development center corridor. Pretty changes, taking away.
One of the things that we do anytime that there's property that's zone industrial that we do discuss with our economic development director to see if he has any issues with it. Right, there weren't any from him regarding this request.
We have not received any. Thanks, staff.
Here.
Mr. Dennis?
To clarify, there wasn't anything from the economic side of it. They said, didn't have anything with it.
I had not received anything from economic development.
All right, am I hearing it?
No, I'm like said, you know, we, these are, anytime there's an industrial area that we, we do reach out to them. I'm pretty sure we've had this conversation and also I guess if you go to want to expound about what's really happening in the Richland County has, you know, two other areas within Richland County now that have been identified for industrial use to industrial parks, one in Blythewood area that rezoning came to you some time ago. And also the, the area down off of Shop Road and Pineview Road. And again, number those zonings have also come to you also. So I believe that this is a prime area for, you know, pushing for economic develop, you know, economic development at this, at this location.
Mr. Chair, a question for staff?
Sirks?
Mic's not on. I'm sorry, I was holding it down. With this proposed change, I, I guess, how would it work as a, a part of the larger economic development center and, and corridor? If, if, if at all?
Well, as you look at the economic development center corridor designation within the comprehensive plan, this type of the request and development would be supportive of the economic development that takes place in this area. And again, as, as stated, when, um, with under the land use and design, concentrated areas of high quality employment facilities integrated with or adjacent to complementary retail and commercial uses and or medium and high density residential uses. It was a matter of will it complement the, the economic development that's taking place in that area or the industrial?
Mr. Yonkey?
We asked the staff to zoom the map out a little bit. I want to see the next neighborhood of, and this, it looks like entrance to this would be from Farrell Road. Residential is on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's almost like they're disconnected. Residential is on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's almost like a, they're disconnected. Scroll down so we can see Killian Road. Can I make a motion?
Thank you, yes, uh, Mr. Yankee.
On staff.
Second.
Okay, we, we have a motion, uh, to recommend case two-two dash zero-one-seven MA to County Council with a recommendation of approval. And we have a second. Uh, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Price, if you please take the vote.
Right, those in favor of case twenty-two dash zero-one-seven MA, um, for, um, the motion was for approval. Um, Sirks.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Durant.
Hi.
Metz.
Hi.
Fryerson.
Hi.
Johnson. Yankee.
Hi.
Dennis.
Oh.
Rannell.
Oh. Motion passes. And again, we're a recommending body, so this case would go on to County Council for, uh, revoke, for.
Mr.
Yeah, can I give my reason for no vote?
Sure.
Uh, the only reason why I voted no on this, I, I, I was struggling to give up, uh, economic development area for a residential considering. Everything's on the other side of the railroad tracks and down below. It doesn't go until Clemson Road, um. I drive that area a lot, so, uh, that's the only reason, uh. I know Richland County was very happy when they got that economics on pass, so I just really didn't want to give up anything from it.
All right, thank you. Our next case is case number two-two-zero-one-two MA. Mr. Price, whenever you're ready. As zero-two-one MA.
All right, so again, as stated, um, the next item is case twenty-two dash zero-two-one MA. The applicant is Tony Lawton. The location is one-thirteenth Cease Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone one-point-one-four acres from RU rule to general commercial, um, GC. Uh, staff recommends disapproval of this request, um. Again, principally, staff recommends disapproval as it's not consistent with the general objectives of the comprehensive comprehensive plan for the neighborhood medium-density future land use classification. However, you like pointed out, the proposed zoning would be in character with the adjacently zone GC district parcels.
Hey, thank you.
So, you know, so based on the comprehensive plan, staff recommends disapproval of this request.
Yes.
Yes, we have the applicant here, Tony Lawton.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tony Lawton, and I'm representing the clients, the owners of one-thirteenth Cease Road. Uh, sometime in January, uh, they received a notice, uh, from the county where they were, uh, considering, uh, rezoning this from RU to GC, so they were very excited about hearing that would give them the opportunity to, uh, locate their family business back in the area of which they were once located. Um, the property right in front of it, uh, one point, uh, eight, nine acres is, uh, right now currently zoned as C-three, and so, uh, as, uh, Mr. Price said, the properties around it contiguous, you know, is between GC and C-three. So we would, uh, really consider, you know, thank you for considering, uh, moving this to, uh, GC.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Right, thank you. And yeah, staff, if you pull up the satellite image again, please. Dennis.
F, just a heads up, um, on everyone we talked about, if y'all could just pull up that satellite image, because my five G is, um, not five G today.
Okay.
Clear pulling that up just to clarify, applicant mentioned notice and property to.
Yes, so that was part of our initial remapping, um, process that we were going to initiate after the adoption of the Land Development Code text in November of twenty-twenty-one. Um, and so what the applicant received, um, I guess everybody received is what was scheduled to be the proposed zoning for that area. So what they received could have probably stated that this would go from rural to a general commercial designation.
Yeah, so personally, I'm, I just look at it and you got an L-shaped surrounded general commercial. And then you got the, uh, railroad track on the backside of it. Pretty pinched in there, um. Otherwise, I would I would feel less comfortable. Activity. Broad River Road. Obviously, Broad River Road is, is a main thoroughfare in that part of the county. You do have commercial. So looking at this parcel, that Mets Plumbing, that's in the, is that in the town of Irma? That why it's white on the, on our packet? That is a parcel. Uh, looks like a landscaping business at the other parcel that's part of the town of Irma, just to the north of it.
Uh, I got a question for staff. Um, I noticed in the packet that the site directly to the right below it and all that is supposedly labeled GC, but when I was on it, I couldn't figure it out when I was on the GIS at home.
Sometimes, um, the actual, um, zoning overlay, um, color that, that it would describe that zoning designation doesn't show, but if you put your mouse on it or you click, it will tell you what the zoning of the parcel is. So like, if you take a look at what, um, Mr. Delay has highlighted, for some reason, when we put the zoning layers up, it didn't, the color didn't show. However, if you look at the property description, does identify it as, um, commercial.
Right. So C-three is commercial, general commercial?
Yes, sir. That was, um, that was the older, the, the previous zoning, um, designation prior to the two thousand and five Land Development Code. Not sure why that didn't transfer over, but essentially a property is GC.
That's why I couldn't find it in the old Land Development Code and I was scratching my head, kind of going, well.
It is actually GC, yes, sir.
Got it.
Mr. Taylor.
Uh, question for staff, similar to Mr. Yankee, um. So the notice that was given, again, I, I guess my, just for clarification, um, was it communicated that these would be zoned general commercial or was that just, um?
It was communicated that these are the proposed zoning designations. It was never stated that this is what it will be.
Mr. Yankee.
I have a question for you, motions. Mr. Chair, just want a, a question for staff. Um, the site, you, you communicated to the, the owner early on that it's possible that would be rezoned, um, general commercial, and it's surrounded by those similar sites, is that correct? Right. And can you just tell me what is the inconsistency with the comprehensive plan then? Uh, it seems to fit right in with the, what's already there as general commercial.
I think when the comprehensive plan was, um, when we were identifying areas, we didn't necessarily look at the zonings that were already in place. So in some cases, you may have have some parcels that already had a certain zoning, in this case, commercial, but based on how we identified the future land use for that area, commercial may not have been the appropriate zoning or didn't meet those recommendations of that designation.
Here. Mr. Yankee.
I'd like to make a motion of approval.
All right, we have a motion to send this with a recommendation of approval up to County Council. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion before we take a vote? Okay, Mr. Price, if you take the vote, please.
All right, those in favor of, of the recommendation of approval for case twenty-two dash zero-two-one MA. Sirks.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Durant.
Hi.
Metz. Fryerson.
Hi.
Johnson. Yankee.
Hi.
Dennis.
Hi.
Rannell.
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, I'll just again add as the justification since, uh, on paper, we're going against staff, I'll, I'll just say as one in support that, uh, the surrounding area, uh, several tracks in the immediate vicinity have the same zoning designation. I don't anticipate, um, any inordinate impact on the surrounding area. And, uh, yeah, that's my I'll stab Mr. Yankee as the moving.
I agree with the chair who, who added that to my motion.
All right, thank you. And, uh, we, we're a recommending body, so that case will now move to County Council. Next case, uh, Mr. Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, case two-two-zero-two-three MA.
Yes, sir. That would be the one that, uh, we also had the, uh, correction for staff recommendation, recommendation on page forty-seven from approval to disapproval.
Price, whenever you're ready.
The next item is case twenty-two dash zero-two-three MA. The applicant is Gerald A. Lee. The applicant, uh, the parcel is located off of Archie Drive. The par, uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone three-point-one-two acres from RSMD, which is residential, single-family, medium-density to RMMD, which is residential, multi-family, medium-density. Uh, again, staff's recommendations for disapproval of this request, um, as is would not be consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, which identifies this as neighborhood medium-density, um, within the plan. Um, the plan recommends multi-family development should occur near activity centers and within priority investment areas with access to roads with adequate capacity and multi-module transportation options, um, which we feel that this particular site does not, um, achieve any of those recommendations. And so again, for these reasons, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. Any after for applicant? Dennis.
Yes, we have the applicant signed up, Gerald Lee.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Lee. I represent the property owner, Mr. Demetrius Summers. Or Fuller, Demetrius Fuller. This parcel is located at the end of Archie Drive where it turns, where it then turns and becomes Flora Way. The Housing Authority of Columbia owns an affordable housing complex along the entire length of Flora Way and halfway down the north side of Archie Drive. This complex contains eleven duplexes, three single units, and a maintenance building. The other abutting property on the south side of Archie Drive is an eight-bed intermediate care facility. Behind the property is a parcel with access from Raven Road that is currently zoned PDD. But the possibility of any development on the property is unlikely since it is virtually all floodplain and wetlands. Our parcel is three-point-one-two acres, of which point-six-seven acres is jurisdictional wetlands and another point-eight-four acres can't be used because of county-required buffering. Fifty percent of the property is unusable and remain undisturbed. The owner of this property approached us in twenty-twenty-one wanting to develop properties for much-needed affordable housing. We first wanted to do single-family residential, but too much of the property is unusable. We then discussed with county staff about possibly doing duplexes, but was told the current zoning would not permit them. However, the property was going to have a new zoning classification soon under the new LDC that would allow duplexes. We just had to wait until it got approved. The anticipated approval was March of two thousand and twenty-two. Then we were told possibly July, and now maybe early twenty-twenty-three, we are still waiting. We're simply asking for permission to construct these affordable housing units now before construction costs rise even higher instead of waiting for a zoning change. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for the applicant? Dennis, anyone else?
Oh, sir, that's all we have.
Right. Having heard from the applicant, do we have any questions for staff or we want to move into discussion?
Here. I just have one question for staff. Um, the Housing Authority of the City of Columbia, I know its primary was RSMD, but there is a secondary zoning for RMMD, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the city is operating the facility outside of the city limits, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. And it's duplexes? Does that sound right?
Yeah, those are duplexes, and also the parcel that's immediately, um, east of the subject properties, looks like a big house, uh, which would be across the street from, um, the duplexes, the, the Columbia housing. That is, um, is a single-family residential use, um, but is owned by the Babcock Center, so it's actually a group, group home, um, according to our code.
Awesome.
If staff could articulate its perspective of the applicant's comments relative to future zoning on that site.
I was trying to, I don't have what the rule, what we actually originally proposed it to be. So leave the, the letters that went out, um, in January, as we previously heard, um, designated this area, proposed, proposes here to be R-six, um. Which was more of a higher density rezoning than what is here now. So when he's referring to the previous zoning letters or the zoning letters that went out. Again, just as the previous case we discussed, we sent out letters of what proposed zoning may be for an area. And in this case, it was going to be R six. During that time, we just, action was not taken. To initiate any of the remapping, we're still kind of in that process right now. So it has been bumped, we were originally thought this would have taken place in May of this year. But it's been bumped a little further as we continue to reevaluate not only the land development code. That was adopted in November, but we're also looking at the mapping, which is part of what council has. Asked the planning commission to do. So right now, as he stated, a number of applicants are coming in rather than just waiting to see ultimately what the decision the county would be. They're just coming in and asking for the zoning that they feel is most appropriate for their intended use.
See one of those notices, Mr. Johnson. Did you get one in the mail, do you remember seeing it? Yeah, okay, it, it, it kind of looked like a tax notice that really got everybody's attention. And, um. And that was, um. Staff's recommendation for rezoning, that's not binding at all on, on anybody or anything. And that's, you know, just part of the process that we're still ongoing, that we'll be revisiting later in the meeting. As far as what the new zoning map should really look like. But we certainly understand. Why people would mention it when they come in for. A zoning map application requests.
Mr. Chairman, I would just make the comment that from a density standpoint, there's a fair amount of density in that area. And that would just further.
Yeah, just looking at the, the report from the staff, looks like the maximum number of units for the site would, if rezoned, would be twenty-four. Dwelling units on the three acres.
That's correct. Can I make a comment to that?
No, usually just give you two minutes as an applicant and if anybody's got a question for the applicant, though, you're welcome to. Ask and then we can call him back up to the stand. Sorry, that's just our process, not trying to be mean.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Helping the applicant out a bit. But just for, you know, again, I know we have a number of new members. When we put down what the total number of units that could go on the property is, we're putting down the gross number. We're not taking into consideration potential infrastructure that's going to be necessary for the roads. We don't take into consideration if there are any constraints on a property such as wetlands or flood zone either. So that number will probably be reduced. Based on the existence of the wetlands and also potential infrastructure that would need to be placed on the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Question for staff. With regard to one of the. Comments that was made related to the. The. Character of some of the buildings around that, that area. That's just a, a use issue, right, that's not related to. That, that doesn't have anything to do with what the, the. Current zone or what the comprehensive plan calls for, for that area.
Um, no, sir, we leave a number of uses, uses were established prior to our comp plan. We can probably, we can pull up the date of them being established on the site.
Those might well be defined or labeled as non-conforming uses, permitted non-conforming uses.
Potentially, um, really, we're only talking about the Columbia, decided on by Columbia Housing Authority. Again, as Mr. Dennis pointed out, there is a. A split zoning on the property, some single families, some multifamilies, so now all of it will be deemed to be non-conforming. And again, as we discussed before, we, you know, our recommendations are based on a, the comprehensive plan. So that's what we primarily look at from staff. There are the issues that may come up, such as it did on the last case, the existing zonings in the area. Or in some cases, the existing uses that, you know, use the planning commission can take into consideration upon making your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation as a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Out of motion? Okay, Mr. Johnson's made a motion to send. Case number two-two zero-two-three MA to counsel with the recommendation of disapproval, is that correct? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion before Mr. Price takes the vote? All right, Mr. Price, thank you.
Are those in favor of the motion for disapproval of case twenty-two dash zero twenty-three MA? Taylor. I'm sorry, I didn't, Mr. Taylor, what was your? Johnson. Dennis. So that motion, um, fails five, four to five?
Okay, run it back to reverse, somebody make the motion, please. Mr. Dennis.
I have a motion to make. I would like to send case number twenty-two dash zero-two-three MA. To county council for approval. Reasoning being, uh, the surrounding area does have multifamily, uh, split zoning uses directly to the right of the area. And that's why I'm going with it because it supports that area.
Second. Right, moved seconded. Send two-two zero-two-three MA with recommendation of approval. Mr. Price, would you please take the vote?
All right, those in favor of the motions for approval of case twenty-two dash zero twenty-three MA. Um, Sirks. Taylor.
Yes.
Durant.
Yes.
Metz.
Yes.
Fryerson.
Yay.
Johnson. Yankee.
Hi.
Dennis.
Hi.
Random. So that motion passes. I'm correct, six-three.
That's what I got.
Who voted no? Raise your hand if you voted no. Is that right? Okay, six to three. Motion passes, motion carries. Right. So that's the recommendation that'll go up to county council. Case, next case, case two-two zero-two-four MA. Mr. Price, whenever you're ready.
And, um, item case twenty-two dash zero-two-four MA. The applicant is Charlotte Huggins, the location is ten-five-one-two Garnas Ferry Road. The applicant is requesting to rezon two point eight seven acres from rural commercial to general commercial. As you note in your zoning history. Section of our package footage, that there have been a number of resonings for this particular parcel. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. That it doesn't seem to be in compliance or consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan. Again, staff recommends disapproval. Comprehensive plan designates this area as rural large lot. And within that zoning, within that comprehensive designation, it recommends residential developments on large lots. Open space subdivisions and smaller agricultural operations for areas designated as rural. For these and other reasons, staff recommends disapproval.
Any preliminary questions for staff? All right, Mr. Dennis.
I will have the applicant here, Charlotte Huggins.
Good afternoon, thank you for coming. Um, I'm Charlotte Huggins, reside at two-seven-three Old Congregory Run Road, Eastover. Have been there since nineteen eighty-three. And Mr. Price, uh, he is right, I have been here several times. And, uh, currently it's two point eight seven and, uh. We bought the property in twenty fourteen and I've been coming here since twenty sixteen, multiple times. Uh, six or eight times, um, it's over two acres. First I was told, it's not two acres, you can't apply for GC. Uh, then we got the two acres, we had subdivided some adjoining property we had. Then we were told, um, we didn't fit. And, uh, there's adjacent property across the road, even the Richland County Recycle Center. That's, uh, GC, everybody's GC, we can't get GC, I don't know. I talked to Norman Jackson in the past and Shaquise Newton. And, um. You know, I'm all for helping the economy and people grow and our area is growing, our community. It's, it's growing out there and, um. You know, that's, like I said, I'd, I'd like to, still been trying, you know, I survived last year's stroke. I survived the stroke in May and, uh, I'm back here fighting for our community. And, um. You know, that, that sort of ends that, but I, I do have a question. I'm all happy for the owners that get what they need, uh, number four up there. You approved RU to GC, RU to GC at one point one four. And I have over two and I, I was told on another property I have, I can't even put in my application. Because I don't have two acres to meet the GC rule. So that sort of shocks me right there. I don't, I don't understand. But thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Huggins. Chair, come on down.
Thank you for the two minutes, Travis Huggins, seventeen nineteen Old Eastover Road. Um, I've lived out there for thirty-two years, I actually came with my mother, um, to fight this same case. For about six years and I'd like to point out, we paid probably eighteen thousand dollars in taxes to Richland County for that time, we could not use this building. Across the street, I would like to point out, there's a convenience store that is GC. It is only on one acre of land. If you notice beside that store, he was also awarded back in the day thirty-four acres. Of general commercial property where you could build Walmart, anything you want, probably several Walmarts. We have a building here that's now. Cost us probably about three hundred thousand dollars. To purchase and be able to use that's been existing businesses all my life. It was an embroidery shop, it was, uh, scientific research, it was a daycare restaurant. And that's only some of the ones I can remember, but, um, basically the owner died, it reverted back to rule. Which I also disagree with that in Richland County. When it reverted back, we purchased it as rule. We've been fighting ever since to be able to do what's in the area. You know, we have a convenience store across the road, we have an embroidery shop across the road and we have a dump, which is Richland County. I just ask for your consideration because they could build them all across the road with thirty-four acres GC. There's no structure on that land. This structure's probably been here since the seventies. We just want to be able to use it for the community. Thank you.
Have others signed up to speak?
Not on that one, sir.
On, on the screen right now, we're, we're talking about the property that's outlined in the light green, not, not where the. Mouse hand is hovering. Okay, thanks. And Mr. Price, do you want to review, uh, any of the zoning information you might have as it relates to the parcels across the street? From the subject parcel?
Unfortunately, sir, the only thing I can offer is, um. Uh, stated under the zoning history, um, is that, that parcel GC's out, a parcel GC's south of the site. Was rezoned back in twenty fourteen. I did know that, you know, right across the street is, is, is a convenience store, I think most people just noticed Mr. Bunkie's. I'm correct, and then in court, and that stated to the, and the applicant stated, there is the Richland County, um. Not landfill, um, solid waste facility. Which is right, I think Mr. Delage is pointing. Um, and I believe that there was a parcel that was rezoned some years ago to get out. I'm kind of going off memory, um, behind there. Which I need to check, um, because I believe a portion of that was rezoned. Also commercial to allow for, uh, some, some, some parking.
What was to the?
Just met back into our air force base.
Mr. Chair. Yankee.
That staff just zoomed the app out some.
One other questions for staff or, or comments or discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Farson.
Um, and staff, if, if I heard Mr. Huggins correctly. Prior to his family purchasing the land in question. Um, there was commercial use there and when the previous owner died, it reverted back to rural. Is that accurate information?
Um, maybe not as stated, um, I think the intent of it was that the property was used. Commercially under the rules zoning designation, which would have made it non-conforming use. But I guess once the owner died and a period of inactivity took place. Then the non-conforming status was lost and all commercial, uh, uses that were previously allowed were no longer allowed.
So do you know right offhand what period of time? The non-conforming use was allowed to exist and when that expired?
Um, I would need to go back and take a look at it.
Approximately, it'd be okay.
I, I, I think you can kind of go back, if just looking at the history, it definitely was before twenty sixteen. And I say that because looking at the history of the rezoning requests that have taken place, had the non-conforming status been in place. Then those would not have been necessary, so. For that time.
Currently zoned rural or RC?
RC.
Rural commercial. That's, yeah.
And that was approved, um, twenty nineteen.
Property that's got Mr. Bunkie's on it, it, it was zoned, it became zoned GC. Did you say you knew when that was?
I would have to look at exactly when that would have occurred.
Yeah. Obviously, it's been there a long time, the business has been there a long time. I'm just wondering if that was. Kind of, uh, quote unquote, proactively zoned as such as part of a, um, initial mapping process or the ground of zoning mapping.
Well, only thing I can tell you is, you know, unfortunately being here forever. Um, I've never had to post that property, um, to be rezoned, my assumption is that it would have been proactively. I've never had to post that property to be rezoned, my assumption is that it would have been proactively rezoned general commercial.
Maybe in the seventies?
Probably when we would do an adoption of our maps.
First time? Yeah, I mean, it feels like a head scratcher that that rezoning of the large parcel across the street behind Mr. Bunkie's. That was.
I'd like to make a motion.
Farson.
I move that we rezone, I mean that we recommend that property number C twenty-two dash zero two four M A be sent to county council with the recommendation of approval. And because it goes against staff recommendation, my rationale is that according to what I listened to and what the witnesses stated, it just seems that existing property is in this general commercial zoning designation. And this would just be consistent with what already exists.
Second.
All right, we, there's been moved and properly seconded, we send case two two zero two four M A to council with the recommendation of approval. Any other discussion before we take the vote?
To comment, Mr. Chair.
The Dr. Ron.
I'm sitting here trying to wrap my head around this, it just doesn't seem to make any much sense to me that the area on the south side of three seventy-eight, Mr. Bunkie's and what everything else is general commercial. But then right across the street, roughly adjacent to it, that has not been allowed to be general commercial, so that's why I'm supporting this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Price, if you please take the vote. Again, the motion is to recommend approval.
Motion of recommendation of approval for case twenty-two dash zero twenty-four M A. Those in favor? Serks?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Durant?
Yes.
Metz? Farson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Donkey?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
Ronald?
Oh.
Six, three vote for approval of the request.
All right, thank you. The recommendation is for approval. And that will go to county council. Next case, two two zero two five M A. Mr. Price, whenever you're ready to proceed.
On this request, the next item is case twenty-two dash zero twenty-five M A. The applicant is Charlotte Huggins, the location is ten two oh one Garner's Ferry Road. The applicant is requesting to resolve four point three two acres from rural to rural commercial. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. This subject site is located within the rules designation of the comprehensive plan. The staff feels that the request is not consistent with the recommendations of the plan, which recommends that commercial development be limited to rural activity centers. In addition, to the comprehensive plan, the Lower Richland Community Strategic Master Plan does not support the type of residential, excuse me, type of development associated with the R C zoning designation within the identified rural residential areas. Further, the intensity of uses and development allowed under the R C zoning designation would be incompatible and out of character with the present zoning, land uses and development pattern within the area. So again, staff's recommendation is for disapproval.
Thank you. Any questions at this juncture for staff? Mr. Taylor?
Chair. Page, a question for staff, is that a typo on page sixty-eight at the top? Should it be RU to R C?
Thank you very much, that is correct, that should be RU to R C.
Anything else for staff before we hear from the applicant? All right, Mr. De-
Yes, we have the applicant, Charlotte Huggins.
Yes, thank you. Charlotte Huggins, two seven three Old Congregy Run, Eastover. This property, one oh two oh one is currently, I mean, it is four point three two acres. We're not requesting to build anything, it was an existing restaurant, grill and bar. And you've had it, I think, zoned incorrectly over the years as RU and it has a better fit as R Z, R C. Currently, there is, like I said, a business, it is already there and operating. We just request a zoning change to have a better fit since everybody's doing all this remapping and rezoning and everything. Thank you.
Have any questions for Ms. Huggins? And Mr. Dennis, anyone else signed up to speak?
We have Travis Huggins.
Travis Huggins, seventeen nineteen Old Eastover Road. So my parents just recently purchased this property. This is an existing business, it has been several different businesses since the sixties. There is also two other commercial buildings on this property. As the previous property, we're dealing with existing structures that was placed in the sixties and seventies and it's been businesses for our community since then. This one has been able to stay operating, keep the doors open. I actually own and run the O'Kelly's Bar and Grill now. The property to the right is an existing tire shop. It cannot ever be anything besides a tire shop, a used tire shop. It cannot be anything else. In front of that, there used to be a welding shop. It's closed, it can't be anything. We're just trying to use what has been placed in our community for the last fifty years, still for the community. That's why we're here fighting still, you know, we're, there's nothing out there, I've lived out there my whole life. And there's nothing after Bunkie's closes at three o'clock at the kitchen, then the convenience store closes at five. You're driving fifteen, twenty minutes to town where you're already having abundance of vehicles. And we're just trying to do something for a community out this way. We're not asking to build a Walmart, you know, we don't have thirty-four acres, it's not being used for anything that's G C, we're just trying to be able to do different stuff besides a tire shop. If you will, that's, that's what we're trying to do today. Thank you for your consideration.
Here.
Dennis.
I have a question for staff. This property, the business on there, has it been operating non-conforming the whole time prior to that?
Yes, sir.
Purchase? So they never did anything, the previous owners never did anything to have it non-conforming legally, correct?
No, sir.
Okay.
Has not been established permitted non-conformance? The business is there now?
Say that again, sir.
Is it operating, you know, lawfully?
Yes, non-conforming.
As a non-conformist?
Yes.
And that's the O'Kelly's and then the tire shop as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could somebody from staff maybe talk a little bit more about non-conformances, like what they are?
Okay, so I can come at it from two different angles here. So what we have is a request for to rezon just to rural commercial. And the difference between having the property zoned rural commercial or having a commercial zoning designation to it as opposed to keeping it as a non-conforming use is non-conforming remains as is. No future expansion, no change of views. What is there, what stays? And if it discontinues, as Mr. Huggins stated earlier, you know, for use discontinues or loses that non-conforming status, it cannot be reestablished. The rural commercial or any commercial zoning designation that's applied to the property would allow for any of the uses that are listed within the rural commercial zoning designation. It also would allow for expansion or improvements to the site that would actually physically alter the building or the property.
How does a non-conformist get created?
Non-conforming is if a use was established prior to any ordinances or mapping that would make it no longer a permitted use. So you have a, in this particular case, you have a commercial use that was there forever, you know, prior to the adoption of any zoning regulations. So it is allowed to remain. It's a little stain that it's allowed to remain, but it's, its survival is not encouraged, you know, with the limiting the ability to be able to modify the building as far as expanding it. Also, but that's where the non-conforming status comes from. It was there prior to any ordinances that would have prohibited issues.
Is it fair to say that they're permitted to continue in operation just because we're trying to balance, you know, whatever the economic interests and the ongoing activity versus the public policy as far as what we want that land and that area to be?
Yes, so it would be allowed to continue to operate as is, if a rezoning request is not ungranted.
Any other questions or comments or discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman. Two two oh two four that we voted on and approved seemed clear cut because you had general commercial right around it. This, I think, is different. I think that you look at the surrounding use. At that same take that same action. That's just, just look.
Donkey.
Can we zoom the map out again? Staff, please. And what is the property right next to it? The left.
Sir, I have a motion. I would like to send case number twenty-two dash zero two five M A to council for disapproval. As it does not fit the comprehensive plan or the surrounding area.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Any other discussion before we take the vote? Okay, Mr. Price, if you please take the vote, this is a motion for a recommendation of disapproval.
All right, those in favor of the motion for disapproval for case twenty-two dash zero twenty-five M A? Serks?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Farson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Donkey?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Ronald?
Aye.
Motion passes?
All right, thank you. And that will be our recommendation and the case will now go up to county council. And the next case, two two zero two six M A. Mr. Price, whenever you're ready, if you would present that.
Just a moment, sir.
Problem. Look to take a ten minute break here pretty soon.
So our next item is case twenty-two dash zero twenty-six M A. The applicant is Purple Greewell, I'm saying that correctly. The location is along Rushmore Drive off of Broad River. The applicant is requesting to rezon two point eight one acres from R S M D to G C. The R S M D is residential, single-family, medium density. Again, to G C, which is general commercial. Staff recommends approval of this map amendment principally. As a proposed Just one moment, sir. Yeah, okay, I believe there was a typo in here, but the staff does recommend approval. Instead of being inconsistent, it will be consistent with the general print objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. However, we want to point out that the requested zoning request could be deemed to be an encroachment into the residentially zoned and developed section of Rushmore Road. Rushmore Drive. So again, for staff, principally approves, recommends approval. For this request.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Here, yes, Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, so what? When it calls out the tax map number, it says a portion of, and I noticed when we pull that up, it's already zoned G C with a secondary R S M D. So I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, okay, so if you take a look at the entire parcel, I think Mr. Delay has a line drawn there. So the portion is to, I guess on the left side, is zone general commercial. The portion to the right side is the portion that we have that before you now, that is on single-family residential medium density.
Okay, so the whole thing's not G C?
The whole thing is a split zoning with a small portion of it that's zone general commercial.
Like in our packet on page seventy-six, the orange square that's under the word site is the area that Mr. Delay just highlighted, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Price, okay. Farson.
Yes, Mr. Price, on page seventy-three, under the conclusion, what's throwing me off is that first sentence. Under conclusion, principally staff recommends approval of this map amendment as the proposed rezoning would be inconsistent with.
Right.
So I don't get it.
Yeah, I was trying to clarify that earlier. It should be consistent versus inconsistent.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay, if there's nothing further for the staff right now, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant, Mr. Dennis, if you'd like to call them. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor.
And so as you just pointed out with on page seventy-six, Mr. Chair, so should that red portion also be part of the subject property or no, it's only that second half?
It's just the second half.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't be rezoning for general commercial to general commercial in this case.
Oh, makes sense.
We're just a portion.
Also for staff, you did say- Also for staff, you did say that it could be an encroachment on.
What we stated was, while we recommend approval based on the comprehensive plan, we did want to point out that it could be deemed to be an encroachment into what is already a residentially established and developed area along Rushmore Road.
Anything else for staff?
Effing on Rush.
Let's see, if you're looking at Rushmore Road, the parcels that Mr. Delay's just kind of rolling his mouse across, those are all residential developed parcels. And so we kind of look at how far the commercial goes back into areas that are already developed or zone residential.
Are the ones. And that.
Yes, sir, those also residential. We didn't necessarily include, you could say the same thing, you know, the backup, it could be commercial. The reason why we focus more on what's on Rushmore is because access would come off of Rushmore and not off of Young.
Okay, anything else for staff? Or applicant?
Have the applicant. Sa- Sai? Sing Sabbath of South Carolina? Sorry.
Yeah, my name is Harpal Garibal. I live at one forty-two Sharon Lake Court, Lexington, South Carolina. And I represent Sing Sabbath of South Carolina, which is a religious, sacrilegious organization. We bought this parcel of land in April. And then when we came to Richland County to get the guidelines, how we should start developing for the, the purpose of the buying the land is to put a Sikh temple on the land. That's the purpose. And then when we came here in Richland County in the engineer's office, then we were told that some of the property is residential, some is commercial. And so we were told that we can put a building in commercial, but then we cannot put the parking lot in the residential side. So we were actually advised to apply for, you know, making the whole property commercial zone because the front is commercial and the back is commercial also. But our purpose is basically to put a, a temple building. We are Sikh community and we are about twenty families, you know, who are members of this organization. So it's not going to create any, any traffic or anything or issue. We meet only once every Saturday, every Sunday. And that, that's the plan. And we were actually advised downstairs by the engineers to apply for the changing of the zone from residential to commercial.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we have Don Nye.
Good afternoon, my name is Donald Nye. I live at fifteen fifteen Rushmore Road, Columbia, out in St. Andrews. My wife and I have lived there since nineteen sixty-three. And that's one of the main reasons we bought the property, because, bought the house because of the privates we had, had there. Got to excuse me, I get a little nervous. But we we had the wooded area across the street from us. It's been like that, my, our kids grew up and played in the woods and it's just, just a beautiful view from my house looking across the street. And I think every house in the neighborhood, which is affects, it's been at least, I mean, not the house, but the neighbors have been at least fifty years probably. Ones that it affects. And I just can't see it being zoned, I think it should stay like it is. But we already got, we got Columbia High School down below us, which we get all that traffic. And I think more traffic on that road is just gonna be more than we can handle out there. I just hope y'all give our consideration to, to leave the property as it is. Thank you.
Next, we have Ross Driggers.
My name is Ross Driggers. I live at fifteen oh nine Rushmore Road. I bought my house in nineteen seventy-two, so I've been there right at fifty years. I probably just gonna repeat what Mr. Nye said because I live next door to him. Our children played together in, in that property, you know, as cowboys and Indians and whatever. But I'm opposed to it being rezoned because of, like Mr. Nye said, the problem with more traffic in the neighborhood. We've got the traffic Columbia High School already. And I'd like y'all taking consideration that we are opposed to having it rezoned. Thank you.
Next, we have I'm just gonna say the last name, Kamar. You're good, okay. And we have.
He's gonna pass, just for the record.
And now we have Cynthia J. Smith.
Counsel gentleman and counsel miss. Um, I'm gonna start off with saying that I'm Cynthia J. Smith, eight thirty-five Greenville Circle. I speak for the community that we are two hundred percent opposed for several reasons. Adjacent to where they want to build is a commercial spot. You have subway, you had, kept the kids dentistry and so much over there. Then you have rushes up at the top. You have a flooded Broad River Road that they won't give us funding to expand to widen Broad River Road. They did malfunction junction instead of Broad River. Okay, within that corridor of St. Andrews Road and Greystone, we have seven churches, large churches. That is a nonprofit organization that don't bring in any tax money. We need viable businesses, bringing in bodies, that's getting a paycheck, that's paying tax dollars, the building. We don't need no more nonprofit where you're taking money out of the community and not putting it in and not being visible and present and putting into the community. As you heard where he live at, he live in Lexington. Let him take his place to Lexington. Not over on Broad River Road. Where you wanna get cheap soil and not put into the community, not invest into the community. That's not what we need. We don't need the congestion. We don't need the free visibility. We need taxpayers, we need, we need involved citizens and businesses. That's on my, as a, as a homeowner. Personal, as a business tip, maybe he should do a little bit more investigating before he purchase something to know what he's purchasing at and what he's gonna get. Because we are already a train wreck that we're trying to correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
There, that's all we have signed up.
Right. Okay, come on down, ma'am. Just be sure to give us your name and address upfront. Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Linda Coleman, and I reside at eighteen twenty-one Noneamaker Drive. We're also part of the Pine Valley Neighborhood Association. And what we're concerned about is by rezoning it to commercial, and I don't have a problem with homes of worship, that's not our concern. But the concern is rezoning it to commercial. Because at whatever point in time, the owner may decide to move, it's still commercial. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with Broad River Road, but if you turn right there on rushes, where you see the rushes restaurant, across we have a strip mall. We already having problems there because a lot of seedy type individuals are, you know, just sort of lounge around in that area. Now, when you come down that, that road on, on Rushmore, you're actually coming into Pine Valley. Okay, and like the gentleman was saying, they have lived here a long time, that was strictly residential. So when you come down there, even though the port part of the land that they want to purchase for a house of worship or, I mean, no problem with that, but then right beside that, you still have residential, single. And then you come around the bend and you have a church. Now, if it can be designated maybe for a house of worship or whatever, and then once they decide to relocate, it's still state at that designation, then it's no problem. But then you come around and then you have the whole community. And it's strictly residential, and not only that, but the property that's behind the acreage is residential. It's residential, you're in the people's backyard. So not only are these people having to face commercial property, but the ones on the other side, and their back door is gonna be commercial. We have a lot of homeless people or transit people that's already in that area. And we are, and I do agree with the lady about having some sort of development because you really do need development. There are a lot of existing buildings on Broad River that can easily be purchased, houses. That are, okay, anyway, but we ask you please to disapprove it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chair, a quick question, I, I was taking notes, I didn't have a chance to get the lady's name. Linda Coleman. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is William H. Coleman II. I live at eighteen twenty-one Noneamaker Drive. That happens to be my wife. We have nine hundred and fifty-seven homes in our neighborhood. That's a lot of traffic. The gentleman that was talking, the one in the white cap cuts his neighbor's yard. He doesn't have to, but he does, that's how close our community is. And I don't live near him, but I pass by him all the time. We really don't need any other commercial business in there, in our area. We've been trying to get rid of seedy stuff for years. We move one out, another will move in. It would be nice if we could get something, just something that we ask for once in a while. And this is something we're asking. Please disapprove this. I'm speaking for our neighborhood, I am an executive committee member. So I'm speaking for the neighborhood. We don't need it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. What else here on this case? All right. All right, commissioners, anything for the staff or would you like to move into discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Firestone?
For miss, for staff, is there a zoning classification that accommodates houses of worship, but it's not classified as general commercial?
Chair. I wanna say something because that's gonna piggyback on what she said.
I can get the answer, staff, and then follow up.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Price?
Um, the answer is yes. Basically, all of our zoning designations allow for places to worship in some form or capacity, either as permitted uses outright or by special exception.
Say that again and clarify it for me, please, Mr. Price.
If it's in a commercial zoning designation, a place of worship is permitted outright.
If you were. Okay.
But if it's in a residential area, it would be allowed by special exception, which means it would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for their approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennis?
All right, so looking back at the code, places of worship is permitted in the G C. So that first little block next to rushes is considered G C, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then so technically they could build on that the way it sits, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the rest of it, if they needed it, they could apply for S E, which is special exemption, if they needed the rest of it, correct?
No, sir.
They couldn't?
Here's the issue, if they built on the general, okay. It's for the record, speaking on specifics of, of a rezoning request. But they could build on the general commercial site, could build a church. But you couldn't put the parking or any other ancillary uses for the church on anything zone R S E. No, it's not R S E, excuse me, R S M D on the residential portion.
There'd be no special exception for that?
No, because those would not be in the principal uses, it would be, you know, accessory to the church. So they would not be able to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception.
So why was if you flipped it and asked for the S E on the other side and build on the other side, then could they put the parking lot in the?
Um, okay, you could put the parking, you could, you could put the parking on the general commercial side. And then get a special exception for the back half, the portion that's before you. It would go before the board and that would, whichever, they would have to be specific as to what they're requesting, and that's what the board would approve. And of course, any future expansions or additions to the property would still have to go back through the special exception.
That would keep the whole property from just coming G C. So if they couldn't build on it or anything, then we just don't open it up to anything commercial.
As I, as just stated, the scenario I just used previously, the property would retain the single-family residential zoning designation, even with the special exception.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I have a question.
You wanna go ahead and let this fire, son? Okay.
I think my question is this. When we had the workshop on August twenty-sixth, and there was some discussion about driveways, my confusion is this, if a person or entity wished to purchase, I meant build something, I thought a parking lot, you know, like there might be a requirement that you have enough space for a certain number of automobiles or trucks or whatever. So in essence, when a person applies to rezone something, you have to get a separate designation for the parking lot and a different one for the building? And they don't come as one parcel?
No, ma'am, so if the, if the zoning allows for the principal use, all of the accessory on the ancillary uses that would normally accompany, company that would be permitted on that property. So you build a church because that's allowed under that zoning designation on that same zoning, which could also put the parking and the fellowship hall and so on, that goes along with the church.
Okay, now what you're saying to me makes a lot of sense. So my confusion is when the initial person spoke to us, he, he talked about being told that he could build the sanctuary or the temple, but that there was a problem with the parking lots. So could someone clarify that part?
That's what we're, I think, Mr. Dennis, Commissioner Dennis had just previously asked. So on one, on the portion that is not subject for your, your review for rezoning, the front part is on general commercial, so a, the place of worship could go there because that is allowed in that zoning designation. However, the remaining half of the property is on single-family, and that would not support any of the parking or additional uses that will be associated with the church on it, with, on, on their own.
But couldn't the whole issue be stopped by getting the appropriate designation for the church and asking for the special exemption for the parking lot?
Actually, it would be the opposite, what they could do is ask for the, the special exception for the establishment of the church on the residential portion. And then you could, you know, potentially build. Well, of course, if you get the church, you can also build the parking on that same site that's subject to the special exception, or you could also build it on the general commercial side. that's subject to the special exception, or you could also build it on the general commercial side.
Is this an issue that could be delayed? And maybe the entities involved get back with zoning to work out something that's amenable? So there won't be a conflict?
Um, what, just kind of basing on, now I'm kind of going back into my, you know, my history of being here with the county and on these type cases. I think the discussion that we're having now, I think the applicant is, has heard this. I think I've had a brief discussion with the applicant also regarding this. What you have before you is a rezoning request for general commercial. If you deem this to be appropriate, we'll continue forward and take it to County Council for a recommendation for approval, and County Council will make a decision. If you give a recommendation for denial, it will still go before County Council, but the applicant may also, you know, determine that they may want to look at other options and maybe not proceed going forward to County Council with essentially, with a recommendation of denial from the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Chairman. About, uh, no, no, I'm sorry, you can't. Um, Mr. Johnson, I believe you were up next.
I was simply, Mr. Chairman, going to point out that your point that Mr. Price was responding to, that there's at least two paths forward without the approval of the rezone process. They've discussed one, but the other is to rezone the first. Or so less. There are, there are other paths forward.
And, Mr. Durant?
Here, I have a question for staff. Mr. Price, in your conclusion, you said, however, the requested rezoning request could be deemed to be an encroachment into the residentially zoned and developed section of Rushmore Road. As I look at the map, does that statement essentially described the site? If it's zone, general construction will be at, you have a G C stuck right in between roughly two residential areas, and that, that's what the encroachment is?
Yes, sir. That's what we're looking at. How the depth of the commercial zoning, how, you know, going into that residentially developed area.
I don't just have one lawyer up here anymore. Now you got four lawyers up here. And we're probably all thinking the same thing about legal definitions of encroachment under property law.
And that's why I said deemed, so there's, you know, again, that can be an opinion piece. Now, again, I want to, you know, just went out to the planning commission again. What we have before you is a rezoning request for general commercial. And while we do have, and I think we started off the whole meeting with this, while we have an idea what may go there, that's really not before you as a planning commission. I mean, the idea is just the intent, but what we're looking at is a general commercial zoning request and whether it's an appropriate, whether it's an appropriate zoning designation at this location. Now, again, you've had enough discussion that I believe the applicant can probably take from that, you know, what options they have. But again, what you had before you is simply a rezoning request for general commercial.
And I think from the neighborhood standpoint, the concerns articulated really focus on the fact that once that entitlement is given and another user comes, then there's no. And so for that reason, I think as it relates to twenty-two oh twenty-six A approving it as presented.
Okay, is that a motion? Are you making a motion? Okay, so it's a motion to recommend disapproval. All right, thank you. All right, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion before we ask Mr. Price to take a vote?
Yeah, staff recommendation was for approval, so if you would mind stating why you're opposed to staff's recommendation.
Well, I tried to do that on the front end was, was my rationale in terms of the fact that there is a, not to block the, the other path forward for that use that is less intrusive.
I'll, I'll just add to that, too, that indeed, this parcel does run deeply down into a residential area. So it just, harmony zoning-wise with the majority of the surrounding parcels. Right. Mr. Price, would you please take a vote?
All right, so we have a motion for disapproval of case twenty-two dash zero twenty-six M A. Those in favor? Sirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Fireson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Okay, so that'll be the recommendation, and that goes to County Council next. Anybody want to add any more map amendment application cases for today? All right, um, so we're almost three hours into the meeting. We have for item eight, a presentation that I think is going to be primarily from the County Conservation Commission of the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. Representations were made. The presentation would be about ten minutes long. Of course, we want to allow time for, for conversation as well. Question is, do we want to take a ten-minute break right now or after we hear from the tourism plan?
No, second.
Right now? Okay, all right, we'll stand in a ten-minute recess. All right, we'll try to get back here about six oh three. I'll take some water if you have to.
See you with that, Mr. Price?
Now we can really get some stuff done. All right. All right, the meeting will come back to order. Thank you for your patience, those of you that have stayed with us. The next item on the agenda is item eight, which is a proposed resolution to recommend that Richland County Council enact an ordinance amending the 2015 Richland County Comprehensive Plan, putting the pieces in place by incorporating and adopting the Lower Richland Tourism Plan into the plan. And I know that we have some representatives here today from, it's Conservation Commission, correct? Richland County Conservation Commission. And Tommy, is there anything that staff would like to share before we turn the time over to them to present on this?
As we were just kind of partners or assisted with it, I would defer to Mr. Epps, who is the manager of the Conservation Commission, is also present as well.
Grabs.
Quentin Epps from the Conservation Division. I think I would just say that I'll introduce John Grego, who's the chairman of the Conservation Commission, to make his presentation. And then if you have any questions afterwards, we'll be happy to answer those.
Right, thank you, and welcome, Mr. Gregor.
I'm John Gregor, I'm chair of the Richland County Conservation Commission. I live at 830 Old Woodlands Road in Columbia. I do stutter, so I may pause occasionally. The purpose of the presentation is just to introduce you to the plan, if you're not familiar with it. And I set aside 10 minutes for the talk. If I go over that, just cut me off and I can go to the ask on slide 19.
Okay.
Finish up there. So if you could, if you could advance time. Okay, a quick timeline on the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. The process actually started in 2016 and in the winter of 2016 and 2017, we had public input sessions, stakeholder meetings, and meetings with county council members. A final draft was prepared in June of 2018 and then accepted the following month by the Richland County Conservation Commission. We presented it to the council about six months later. That request stalled and due to the efforts of staff and community planning and development, the project was reinitiated in the fall of 2021. And so from, from February 2022 to July of 2022, we made a series of presentation to council and to, to the Development and Services Committee. The Development Services Committee recommended forwarding the plan to council to be accepted as a county plan. And in July of 2022, it was accepted as a county plan. Tommy. Just to set some context for this, Congee National Park had record visitation last year of 215,000 people. And visitors to this park spent over $12 million that year within a 60-mile radius of Congee National Park. So it was spent in the greater Columbia area, but very little of it was spent in Lower Richland. And so the purpose of the plan is to make sure that Lower Richland can benefit from visitors to the area and that that increased exposure can create a greater appreciation for natural and cultural resources. Next slide. Oh, forward. Okay, and this slide just places national park visitation in a larger context. Congee National Park is a small park. And at the national level, you're talking about tens of millions of visitors and billions of dollars. And so that's the opportunity that's available to gateway communities. Next slide. Okay, the main themes of the plan are that Lower Richland needs to have better tourism infrastructure, that Lower Richland residents should be the primary beneficiaries of that improved infrastructure, and that a successful plan needs to address small business development, cultural tourism, and nature tourism, a three-legged stool, if you will. Next slide. This map show is, shows different physical locations for the plan. There are gateways around the periphery of Lower Richland County. There are major hubs, Mill Creek Nature Center, close to Congee National Park, Lower Richland Small Business Incubator, and Lower Richland Heritage Center. In addition to major hubs, there are minor hubs, Eastover, Gadsden, and the county's Cabin Branch property. Points of interest include Congee, the Watery River Heritage Preserve, Pinewood Lake Park, and historic houses and churches, corridors connecting them all. And then the plan also had recommendations on branding and wayfinding and on a regulatory framework, which was timely, given the reconsideration of the Lea and Development Code. And we particularly like to advocate for rural zoning categories that promote tourism. Next slide. Okay. Let's see. For nature tourism, I'm going to talk about nature tourism, heritage tourism, and small business development in turn now. For nature tourism, the recommendations included minor nature tourism hubs that include the town of Gadsden, the old Bluff Road, Bluff Road intersection, Pinewood Lake Park, interpretive courses for guides and outfitters, hopefully those from the Lower Richland community, developing interpretive trails linking natural inherited sites. Seeing that the Mill Creek Nature Park, that major hub complements Congee National Park, because Congee National Park is over 90% designated wilderness, there's a lot of uses that can't take place in the park's floodplain that could take place out at Mill Creek. And then Blue Trail access at Mill Creek and Watery River Heritage Preserve. Both the Congee River and Watery River are blue trails, but as you know, there's, or there's no access to the Congee River between downtown Columbia and US 601, no public access. And on the Watery River, there's no public access all the way from Garner's Ferry Road down to Low Falls Landing. And we actually have public points of access that we could leverage through the plan. Next slide. This shows the Mill Creek property right on the Congee River, and elements of that include tent platforms, the opportunity for RV camping, a nature tourism center at the site of the old two-story hunt club building, and paddling access and paddling facilities at the upstream and downstream ends of the property. Next slide. Okay, and this shows the Cabin Branch property, another large county-owned property. Then focus there is just going to be on passive recreation with green trails. It also shows off to the left a farm, the site of a farm-to-table restaurant that's more related to small business development. Next slide. Okay, for heritage tourism, goals would be to include Lower Richland in the South Carolina National Heritage Corridor, to leverage existing resources, both Southeast Rural Community outreach and COASI have developed interpretive guides, help existing nonprofits with development, create a wayfinding system, have a Lower Richland Heritage Center at Hopkins Green. And we're not, it's not clear that that could be a standalone enterprise. So there's talk of combining it with a county branch library and a village green concept. And then help the city of the Eastover, both with historic building rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings. And there have been multiple Lower Richland Oral History projects, but more could be done. Next slide. This shows one possible site of a heritage, of a heritage tourism center. We're calling it the Hopkins Village Green, and it would include Branch Library, Heritage Tourism Center. There'd also be, the small business incubator would be located there. And it would include a farmer's market area, a commercial kitchen, and possibly a bean shelf. So that's more a conceptual plan. Next slide. Okay, the three elements of the small, of small business development include lodging and accommodations, food service and production, and agriculture and food production. Recommendations for all three includes education programs and financing options for local residents. Specifically for lodging and accommodations, there'd be a shared economy training and small loan program and recreational vehicle and lodging options at the Mill Creek Nature Center. Okay, so sort of focused, the first elements, the shared economy, we're referring to Airbnb, Verbo, and those sorts of developments. Next slide is food service and production. And recommendations would include a commercial kitchen at the small business incubator, as I mentioned earlier, catering and restaurant facilities at major and minor hubs, food trucks, and adapting zoning to facilitate restaurant development. Next slide. Next slide, that's, okay, agriculture and food production. The recommendations for agriculture and food production include a farm-to-table branding campaign, a farmer's market, and educational and training programs for specialty farming, and then a farmer's co-op and a refrigeration hub. Okay, next slide. Next slide. Okay, good. Yeah, and so the tourism plan, part of the plan included a guide to its implementation. And that implementation included the funding and phasing of an entire series of major projects that would comprise the plan. And that include, and it also listed the resources and partners for these projects and provided estimated cost. At the time this was put together, that the entire build-out of the plan was going to estimate it to take 10 to 20 years and cost $17 to $24 million. As we had to emphasize with council, when you're, when we were asking them to accept the plan as a county plan, you were accepting the concept and, you know, not necessarily committing yourself to a budget. Okay. We, the, an important point to consider here is that if, if we move forward with these projects, it would follow the typical county process for for major project approval. Okay, next slide. Okay, and then we also put together a five-year implementation plan. The five-year implementation plan focused on improving the infrastructure at the Mill Creek Nature Center, working or developing a cultural tourism through a heritage tourism marketing plan that's actually funded through the hospitality tax and development of the small business incubator. Okay, next slide. Okay, yeah, and we want to emphasize again that the projects are subject to change based on availability of funding. Those are not the actual cost, and the cost won't be determined until projects are approved, procured, and a vendor is selected. Next slide. Okay, we have made progress since 2019, even though the project wasn't officially accepted as a plan until this year. We have completed design work on bridge improvements on the Mill Creek tract. There have been some major improvements to the Palmetto Trail that we helped fund through our hospitality tax program. We've been actively involved in the Lea and Development Code. Hopkins magistrate office has been cited on the Cabin Branch property. That provides parking for access to greenway system that can develop there. At Pinewood Lake, we have had a very successful pollinator garden established there. The, both the staff and commission members have been very actively involved in Congee Biosphere Region planning, which helps identify partners, including Central Midlands Council of Governments that could provide resources to get the plan enacted. And then the Southeast River and Water Expansion creates some of the infrastructure to make these projects possible. And staff has consistently prepared capital improvement project request for council. Next slide.
Right after 10 minutes.
Oh, really? Okay, well, here's the ask, and I think I can stop here. So our implementation property process, the commission has, or the commission approved the plan, Development and Services Forward, the plan to county council for acceptance is a county plan. The county has accepted the plan, and we're asking you to recommend adoption of the plan. And staff put this wording together in its entirety by reference and as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. So that basically says, you know, don't pick out the particular, or just accept the plan as a whole and then make a recommendation to adopt as an appendix to the comprehensive plan. And then the, we would ask the county council to amend the comprehensive plan to add the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. And that just allows us to bring a few more resources within the county to bear to help implement the plan. And I think we could stop there.
Very much. Very interesting, to me at least. I've reviewed the materials as well as I could over the last couple of days and really, really like the spirit of what you guys are pursuing in this vein. Does, does anyone on the commission have a question for Mr. Gregor?
Here.
Dennis.
So when we're looking at this, what, if we're putting this on the what, if we're putting this on the comprehensive plan, or asking to be put in a comprehensive plan, like, who's going to own the land in order to put the cabins and things like that in?
The county owns the land. Some, some has been purchased by the, by the Conservation Division, and some has been purchased through the penny tax program. I think Stormwater may have purchased some of the property as well, so.
Okay, so the county is gonna, the county is gonna own the land, and it's going to be run through you guys, or would it be the Recreation Commission?
It's, that would be, that would be something to be decided.
Okay.
Which model we would use for that, yeah. And I should notice there, there, I meant, because I mentioned Hopkins Village Green, actually, that's, that's one parcel that's not currently owned by the county. Yeah.
Because what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, if we move forward with this, what's to stop free enterprise from somebody else building something down there also that's not part of your guys' plan or us? And try not to?
Well, we'd like to think it's all part of the plan. I mean, if it's something, if it's something that's helping promote the goals of the plan, we, we would hope, we would hope that we could be partners with them in that. I don't know if Steph wants to add something to that or not.
I would basically say the same thing, except that we, the whole purpose of the plan is to promote a sustainable economic development in that area. And any private folks that wanted to follow our lead would be great. And, and what the initial phases of the project would be is to develop a business incubator and to put some camping things down in Lower Richland to keep people stay in the area longer, because that's what happens now. People come to the park for a day visit, then they leave. And if we had some camping or something down there, they could stay, you know, three or four days or a week. And then people would see, you know, start looking around for restaurants or places to stay. And that would encourage business development in the area, along with our small business incubator. We, what the whole purpose of it is, is to promote a sustainable business environment down there to promote sustainability and, and enhance the value of the natural resources in the park that already exists, exists there.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Price, did you have something?
No, just to state, just as I think you may notice, there are times when we're looking at a rezoning request, and we, of course, we'll reference our comprehensive plan, but we also may reference a master plan for that area, what that calls for. And this is kind of along those same lines, in which we will reference the Lower Richland Tourism Plan as certain requests come in, does it help support what the tourism plan is calling for and help achieve those goals?
Here. And, um, why have we heard from the residents of Lower Richland County? Because I know, like, we're up here and we're doing the LDC, and people want us to not do certain things, and they want us to do certain things, but I haven't, where does the people stand?
You could, you could go on the Lower Richland Community Facebook page and get a sense of their sentiment. It's, it's strongly supportive, very strong. You know, why haven't you started doing this already? What's, what's the holdup? Yeah. Now, when we had the drop-in, you could find a property owner or two that had misgivings, but, but in general, the feedback's really supportive.
Thank you.
You say it's been adopted by council as a, as a plan?
Right, yeah, we can, we were a little, I mean, we were on shaky ground saying it was the Lower Richland Tourism Plan, which kind of identified it with a, a county plan when it really wasn't. And so this at least establishes it as a county plan.
Thank you. Eric Jensen, Assistant County Administrator, for the record. Just like you have regulatory bodies and advisory bodies, there's regulatory documents and advisory documents. So our comprehensive plan and our zoning code, our land development code are regulatory documents. And so council has not adopted this plan, because adoption intimates that it is a regulatory document. And so for this to become a regulatory document, it must be included within a document that is recognized by the state of South Carolina as a regulatory document, which in our case is the comprehensive plan and the land development code. So that's what is before you today is, we are asking, as the staff and, and me representing the commission, that this be included within our comprehensive plan, so that when a property owner or business or somebody comes in and asks for a permit of some kind, or then we can now refer to this and say, the land development code says this, the comprehensive code says this, and the Lower Richland Tourism Plan says this, so that when you're making your informed decisions, you have a basis for those decisions. So that is essential, what we're doing. And what we're asking is that you include it as an appendix, rather than to try to dismantle it and insert it into the comprehensive plan. It's just a lot easier just to say, yes, this works. It's a standalone document, it's an appendix to the plan, we can reference it when we have to make these decisions.
But was the action that council took already?
They accepted, they acknowledged that it was complete, and they remanded it to you for consideration.
All right. It, I think it was a hundred and seventy-six pages. I, I looked over it as best I could, but, you know, personally, I might like an extra month to, to review it before I would want to take any action on it, but that's just my opinion. Does anybody else want to discuss? Right now, again, I'm very much in support of everything that you guys are advocating for as far as just the spirit of it, promoting tourism, our natural resources, our history in that area. I'm from that area originally. So, yeah, just like a little more time before we took a vote on that. So, I guess I'll just make the motion to defer to the next meeting, to October. Or anything else that staff would like to share as far as input goes?
Um, no, sir, not if there's, if there's anything that we can provide to you, you know, through conservation, that may assist you, just let us know. We'll get it to.
All right, so, yeah, that's my motion, motion to defer to the next month. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All right. And for the discussion, we'll ask Mr. Price to take the vote on that. And just for the record, Ms. Fireson informed me that she needed to leave, so she's no longer at the meeting.
Those in favor of the motion to defer until the October meeting? Sirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Right. Thank you again to Mr. Gregu, Mr. Epps, for your presentations, for your information, and just very well put together, and we look forward to reviewing it more closely over the next month. Okay, next item on the agenda is item nine. Other items for discussion. Subitem A is a council motion made by Councilwoman Newton, and I believe we have, we have introduced this, this motion to the commission we, in a prior meeting. And just want to ask staff if they've got a recommendation at this point as far as whether or not we should take action at this juncture.
It is requested by staff that we defer this until the October meeting. Looking at, there are a few things we want to look at also, and I also think it would be important to kind of see which direction you take on a number of the motions that y'all are proposing under item nine B.
Okay, and when we do take it up, if we defer it to next month, at that time where, will we have some information, or maybe you already have some information gathered about any proposed approaches, just as far as actual wording goes, to make sure that it's, it's lawful?
Yes, sir, because I mean, we'll, we'll have that for you, because it may actually be language that you may want to just adopt as part of the comprehensive plan. So going forward, regardless of who sits upon, you know, planning commission will have that consistency on how those, these, these, the call plan will be reviewed and which methods we'll be using.
It.
Here.
To Dennis.
I make a motion to defer nine A to the October meeting.
Okay. I can did, I didn't need discussion. Price, if you would, hold the vote.
Those in favor of the motion for deferral, Sirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Metz? Johnson? Yonki?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Randall? Passes.
Right. Set up with the being in October. All right, now we're on to subitem B, recommended amendments to twenty twenty-one land development code. And before we get into these motions, I did want to give the staff an opportunity, seems like a good time to present a review of the current draft zoning map. I know the staff provided the commission with a copy of that map today. And I mean, if nothing else, Mr. Price, maybe you could review some of the parameters used to prepare the map, or, or anyone else on staff?
Eric. I don't have my, I don't have my book in front. Essentially, what we did within your, within the land development code that was adopted in November twenty twenty-one, within there was an equivalency table. So based on the comments from, also from the planning commission, we prepared a, the map that you had before you, which essentially follows that equivalency, in which we looked at the current zoning designations, and we applied the zoning designation within the newly adopted land development code, which of course was most equivalent to it, and we mapped. So there are some, in some cases, not all of the new zoning designations were able to be applied.
Doesn't seem like your microphone is activated.
Okay, I'm sorry. Kind of go back. So again, what we did was we used the equivalency table within the land development code and used those to, to create a map that, to use the current zoning designations that we have, and those that corresponded most closely with those identified within the new land development code. And as you will notice in the ledger, it shows you which of those, you know, how those districts matched up. Of course, there were some zoning designations under the new code that we do not, were unable to create, you know, such as the MU two, using that as an example. So some of them weren't able to be created. One of the things that we also looked at was specifically with the rules zoning designations, in which we showed any parcels that were graded in thirty-five acres, any parcels that were graded, feel like you. And so any parcels that were graded in thirty-five acres were identified as AG. Any parcels that were between three and thirty-five acres were designated as HM. And any parcels that were zone rule or rural residential that were less than three acres were designated as RT.
All right, very good. And is, is this map already available online for public viewing?
No, sir. We, we didn't, we haven't done that yet. Depending on the actions of the planning commission today, we'll determine if we put this on public viewing.
Sure, okay, thank you. Again, just the dark gray areas are municipalities that have their own zoning schemes, so the county zoning, the county land development code does not apply to those municipalities.
Right, and, and I think one of the things, no, it doesn't. I want to, I guess of all of the zoning designations that we have, either, of all of the zoning designation that we have, I think the one that probably from a staffing standpoint, we feel may deserve a little closer look were the parcels that are currently zoned M1. And we stayed there because the M1 zoning designation was a little bit of a hybrid between commercial, more of a general commercial type of uses, and also light industrial. And so to, you know, just to, you know, just to apply what we do to be an equivalency, in this case, the employment designation, we may want to look at that, because also within the M1 zoning designations were residential uses.
Have a simple recommendation?
I think we may have to go and just actually take a look at those parcels. I don't believe that there are a lot of M1 properties that were residentially developed, but I believe that we can go through and try to identify as many of those as we can. And even if it turns out that maybe we actually, you know, actually apply the EMP zoning designation to something that was resident, should have maybe taken on a residential designation, that's something I think that we should be able to come back and look at and, and make those adjustments at a later time.
Think you could have something for us next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, thanks for calling our attention to that. Makes a lot of sense that we would review that if there's a, a way to get that done sooner. And thank you for preparing that map with that criteria. Again, that was certainly based on previous discussion and, and I believe decision-making by the planning commission. And so, so thank you for that. And again, this is, just to confirm that the, this, this draft of the map is quite basically as close as can be, other than discussed to the equivalency table. That's twenty-six dash one point nine E in the land development code adopted in November twenty twenty-one. That's right, isn't it, Mr. Price? Okay. There, can you throw this up on the screen? The map? No.
Apologize to staff, he left already, they actually had that.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to, if you want to go ahead and discuss some other parts of this, I think I can actually get, get it real quick and, on a jump drive and actually have it for you.
Yeah, sure. I mean, again, I know all the commissioners have it in hand. And, and I wanted to get this out in front of us before we got into the motions, because some of the motions deal specifically with the way that this map has been compiled. So without getting into the, to the motions, is, is there any other comments about the map from the commission just upfront? All right. I have to say, Mr.
Mr. Yonki?
Thanks, staff, for working on this. As a fellow GIS guy, I know it's cumbersome dealing with all these parcels, and to see it broken apart, the AG, the HM, we're starting to see a better picture here, more detail. So thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be recognized while.
Suggesting.
Yes. Thank you. I just wanted to talk about a little bit of housekeeping, just in terms of process and where we are. First of all, I wanted to see if, if any of the planning commissioners have gone on to the website to look at the, the rolling ledger and so forth. I wanted to make sure that that was functioning, that, you know, the public could get to it and, 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 you know, with any kind of certainty, look through and see where we are in the discussion. Okay, good, that, that's glad, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, and so what we will do tonight is, subsequent to this meeting, I will go and update that ledger with whatever discussion, whatever motions, whatever dialogue occurs tonight. It'll probably take me a good, in two or three days. in two or three days minimum, you know, workdays to get that there. So you, you could probably expect that middle to end of next week, I'll be able to get that information up for you.
Okay. What else, Mr. Jensen?
Then in terms of process, I know as to chair that you have suggested or requested that we have this available by, for a motion by November. I'm assuming that the structure of that will not be necessarily a polished product, but will be something along the lines of we want all of these changes and so forth. If we can, obviously, we would go into the document, into the land development code. The twenty twenty one version as adopted and make those changes as red lines and then provide them to you. But I'm not sure within two months, given the amount of information we have here and the decisions that still have to be made, that I can have a polished product to uh, yeah, by that November date, but I am confident that I can have a rough product at, at a very minimum. A list of all the requested changes that you could vote on and say, yes, these are the changes that we want made to the text. These are, this is the map in, you know, ninety nine percent or of what we want. And then that would allow us time during the November and December months to go through and then come back to you in early January or February with the final for your vote. Is, is that what you're asking? Or are you asking us to have the, the polished final document to you by November?
Well, I think as close as you can, I, you know. If it's ninety nine percent of the way there, ninety five percent of the way there, I feel like that's going to be good enough for our intentions to be clear to county council. And then they can do with what they will.
I, I, I think, Mr. Chair, if I may, council will want it to be, you know, very clear cut to them when it comes to them. I'm just not sure that I can go through, especially given the number of motions that we have tonight and the ones we've had previously. I'm not sure I can go back into the actual document, make all those changes and have them to you in a format that will be absolutely ready for a final vote on in November. I mean, I can get them really darned close and you may say, okay, you know, we're there, tweak this, tweak this, tweak this. Bring back those red line corrections to us and then we'll be ready for a final action.
Yeah. Well, do your best and then we'll just see how things play out, what the commission wants to do at that time.
Okay.
But yeah, our goal is November seventh to have this, this phase complete as to the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Um, let's see. All right. So these sets of motions, we've got Mr. Dennis's motions are the first six motions. So I think we, we do want to go over each one individually, even if there's not, even if there's unanimous consent to it, you know, we can move through it fast if, if that's the desire of the commission. But what I do want to, you know, give the movement, the movement of each one, the opportunity to present it. And then, you know, again, if there's no need for, for a lot of discussion, fine, we'll, we'll take the votes and we'll rock on through them. So Mr. Dennis has the first six and then I have seven through fifteen are mine. So Mr. Dennis.
All right. I make a motion to, as to manufacturer homes, I move to recommend removal of manufacturer homes from the R two zoning district.
I know this is something that we've talked about in prior meetings, but Mr. Yaki, have a comment?
Right along. I was going to second that.
Anyone like to discuss? All right, Mr. Price, for you to take the vote.
As I say, Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion? Since these are not binding resolutions, you could simply do a yea, nay, as a, as a body, rather than have to roll call vote every single one of them. I, I would like to make that suggestion for the sake of expediency.
Sure, let's, uh. Yeah, all in favor, just raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Uh, votes unanimous. Motion to add that to the list.
All right. I move to, as to farm supply, machine sales and service, I move to recommend addition of farm supply, machine sales permitted by right and HM zoning district.
All right. Do you want to tell us anything about that? You talked about it in prior meetings or?
No. So I was going through here and I was looking at how the rural area works and a kind of agriculture and things like that. And I noticed the farm machines and supplies. Got to find it in here because of Mark. It was permitted in RU. So when you go around looking, AG is, or HM is still a big area. That's, that's going to be your smaller less than thirty five acres. So we would actually be taking that out of the HM. And you know, those HM areas can be up to thirty five acres. So that's why I was wanting to keep that in the HM for future areas for agriculture.
Question. I had a, all in favor of the motion. Any posts?
All right. As to the farm distribution hub, I moved to recommend the addition of farm distribution hub permitted by right to the RT zoning district. Reasoning for that is the same as above. Distribution hub can be a small area of of items for agriculture. So RT could still support that.
Is that defined in the code, the farm distribution hub?
It is.
Mr. Dennis.
I do not have it. The website has it and five G is not working, so I can't pull it up because that was my, where I had it at.
Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, Mr. Yaki. As we're passing the website there, I see Mr. Jensen where the ledger is. Is there any way to make that easier for the public to see what we're working on just earlier during public input? It really seemed like a lot of people were not aware of the ledger that we were working on, like with the multifamily issues like that that we discussed. Just that we're moving this on.
If I, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may be recognized. Um, what I, if I understand your question is, is you're saying that it's not obvious on the website where this is or for people to find it? Or, or do we need to do more publicity to let people know about it? I didn't quite follow what you were asking.
Maybe both. When you look at the website, that ledger link is very tiny towards the bottom.
Okay. I got you. Thank you.
I, I should have mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting as well. As drafted on the map, the HM is everything that used to be RU. Uh, that is less than thirty five acres, but more than three acres.
There's the definition.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, being none, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Oh. I apologize.
Mr. Price.
I don't want to, if you don't mind, can we have a brief discussion on item, item BI one regarding the manufactured homes?
Okay.
Um, just one thing to point out. So looking at our matrix that we have for land uses under the new code. So a manufactured home was originally, I guess it is in the land development code allowed under the AG, the HM, the RT, R one and the R two zoning designations. Right? So, so understanding that if we take it out of the RT, R two, excuse me, would only be allowed in those other designations. And I think is, you know, one of the questions that has come up, you know, from others is the required acreage that's necessary in order to establish a manufactured home because all of those designations typically going to be required to at least be thirty three thousand square feet.
Uh, R one?
Yes.
By acreage, how much is that?
It should be about thirty three thousand.
Acreage wise.
Three quarters of an acre.
Okay. And also there is the option for mobile homes to be in a mobile home park.
Correct.
Okay. And that's, was it R six, five and six? I can't remember.
But what we're looking at what we're looking at is, um, either, you know, you go to a very large tract of land, you know, which it depends on who's looking at it, but if you're going to go from thirty three thousand square feet on, on up go or establish a manufactured home, or you go into a manufactured home park, which again is only allowed in the AG. Give me the HM and the RT zoning designation and the R five zoning designation.
Right.
So as far as an individual unit on, on individual parcel, it would only be allowed in parcels that are at least thirty three thousand square feet and have a zoning designation of RT or you know, higher, one of the lower zoning, zoning destinations.
Yeah, I think the result of the motion was to have mobile homes be relative, relatively, if not generally aligned with where they were allowed under the previous code. So. All right.
I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Number four, Mr. Dennis.
All right. I move to recommend, well, as to veterinary services livestock, I move to recommend the addition of veterinary services livestock permitted by right in the RT zoning district.
Generally, it, it means a vet could treat livestock on a property zoned RT. Is that?
Correct. If you look at our map that was just presented to us, we have a lot of little RT areas out in the rural area. And that's just, I mean, I don't see a lot of vets opening up businesses out there, but at the same time, a rural area needs to have that. And it was permitted in RU, in the cross RU, in the previous LDC.
Currently as drafted in the AG and HM districts, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and if a motion nine out of layout, the legacy RU properties. Yeah. Three, number twelve, three acres or less that was zoned RU would be zoned RT. So that's the small previously RU lots would become RT. And have veterinary services for livestock.
A, a real reason behind that is livestock, you normally put it on trailer, you bring it out to the veterinary place. And you're not going to bring a horse into the town because there's no area to do it. So that allows people out in the rural areas still to have a place to take their horses, cows, goats, llamas, emus, got a few of those around. To have a place out in the rural area that somebody don't have to own thirty five acres or seven acres. They can have a smaller RT area in one of those little clusters and get it done. Because I mean, really and truly, they could have their house and a little barn and most livestock vets, that's kind of how they operate.
Number twelve passes is, is going to be three acres or less. And then you would be, you would have livestock veterinary services on that. Sounds kind of small, doesn't it?
Not really. I mean, livestock veterinary services, they're not, you bring the animal to them. So I mean, if they have a barn there, they're only doing it, you don't really keep animals overnight at livestock veterinary services.
Got a definition on that, staff?
Veterinary services.
Veterinary services parentheses livestock.
Oh, I was actually looking for that. We do have a used category for veterinary hospital or clinic. Didn't see one for livestock. So I believe that motion, you know, I, I could be missing it, but I believe that motion may actually require. Right. I was looking for, for you, within the use table.
Okay.
Yes, in the agricultural area, all the way down to the very bottom, it's permitted in AG and permitted in HM, but it was taken out of the RT.
Just, that's why it just obviously gives me a little pause, just the nature of the activity and being on a small. I mean, that could be all the way down to whatever, half an acre. If everything under three acres that was RU becomes RT. Can you, I mean, under that definition, do we know, can, can you keep the animal overnight? At the vet?
Don't see why not.
Hey, you have like twenty cows out there?
Yeah, I, I, I will tell you from a, I mean, from a definition standpoint, we can impose that. But I mean, from an enforcement standpoint, are we riding by there at night to look to see, is the horse still there?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, there's complaints from neighbors. We're talking about smaller parcels now in RT and you've got ailing horses loud at night. Would it be possible to change this to a special permit instead of by right?
Um, if you do by special requirements, or you're really doing this, uh, identifying additional development standards for it to be there. You're still saying it could be there. So you may require additional screening or something to that effect. Uh, if you do by special requirements and the same effect would be for a special exception. It's just you will establish what the criteria is, it'd be a review by the board. But ultimately, unless they can clearly define where it would be a real nuisance or have a negative impact on surrounding properties, it's probably going to get approved.
Any else on the commission got anything on this? Thoughts? Okay. All right. You want to take a vote, Mr. Dennis?
Hey, let's go for it.
All right. All right. Everybody in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, nay? No? All right. So it passes six to two, right? Is that what y'all saw? Okay.
Yes, six, two.
All right. Number five, Mr. Dennis.
All right. As to animal shelters, I move to recommend the addition of animal shelters permitted by right subject to special requirements in AG, HM, RT zoning districts.
But what's it showing now, the permitted use table? Is it with special requirements in RT?
Oh, it was showing special requirements over in the, I want to say it was EMP INS area.
Mr. Chair, if I may be recognized.
Mr. Jensen.
I believe animal shelter here is referring to the type of animal shelter that the county and city run. Not a shelter for animals, i- is that the what the commission understands this to be defined as?
That's what I. Understood.
Okay.
But is it, only have a position on this, being that it would be the ones operating these shelters?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, my experience is that um. Well, tonight, part of the discussion was whether or not animals would be boarded or not at a veterinary clinic. In a shelter, there's no question they would be boarded and um so the smells, um, the. Sounds and so forth um would be present after business hours. So that is something I think the commission needs to think about. You know, is. I'm going to suggest that distance and lot size makes a big difference in running an animal shelter unless. It is something that is completely confined within a building and is an industrial type situation.
Else the nature, nature of the special requirements that would would be there. Is it, is it like, is it kind of setbacks from property lines or? Okay. Okay.
I don't mean adding confusion to this, but is it possible for us to defer number five and number six? Until after we vote for seven through twelve, where we're talking about changing lot sizes? Because in my mind, if the RT may get smaller. And we're speaking about housing animals overnight. More dense than area. Even it's rural, richland county still.
Yeah, I mean, that. Those motions deal just with with density. For. No make. Structures. Um, but yeah, number twelve. Would do you, would you lot size? That, that's what you would be asking.
How would we do this, staff? With number twelve being later in our agenda?
Mr. Chair, I I would suggest that you may um adjust the order of the items and and what's their herd. Um, and unless it is uh posed by the um rest of the body.
Here. Hey, Mr. Dennis.
Yes, I I know I'm asking for RT in those areas also, but I'm also asking for the, you know, special requirements. Um, I still have to go through and figure out those special requirements to adjust for the RT area.
Like to defer the vote on number five?
I mean, we can defer it for number five and six, and I can go through and double check and adjust the special requirements. So like if it's a RT area and let's say it's uh two acres still. That that could still work for that type, but if it's less than that, we can adjust the. Special requirements in that designation.
Okay. So uh.
I'm happy to hold off on them and then work on that next week or two and finish that up. And get those numbers to you, I was just trying to add it to the ledger, and then when we do the final vote, I would have those requirements to get it done correctly.
Okay. Well, if there's no objection, we'd defer the votes on numbers five and six to next month. Is there any objection to that? Mr. Dennis?
Uh, one thing I just, I need to pull my motion for the uh number five. Cause I already made a motion, so I rescind that motion.
Okay.
And I make a new motion to defer items five and six until the next meeting.
Okay. I'll second it and uh. All in favor, just raise your hand, say yes. Yes, all right. Unanimous. Numbers five and six are deferred.
There. And for those special uh requirements, I'll get that to staff when I look at it, so I can make that a little more. Um cleaned up for everybody, so there won't be any. Questions going forward and you see exactly where it's at.
Okay, all right. Sounds good, um, let's see, so my motions pick up at number seven and. The seven, eight and nine are all related. The uh. Adopted LDC from November twenty twenty one. Um. Had some serious increases in um. Uh. Fired acreage uh to for a dwelling unit when it comes to to density, and I mean, that's. Not the most accurate statement, but I'm just trying to say it in a relatable way. Um. Basically, you gotta have something like seven acres in AG before you can uh put a house on it. Um, and then three acres in HM, and I think it was an acre and a half. More or less in RT. And. I certainly understand that the objective there is to uh preserve. Uh, some of the rural lands, some of the uh worked agricultural. Lands and to uh to keep them of that that nature. Um, I think something that. We, I would like to balance with that interest is the interest of some of the. Families that have spoken to us over these last several months, including. A few that spoke to us today. Uh regularly out of the Lower Richland area that reference family land. Uh, that they. Had an expectation that they would be able to subdivide at some point into the future. And and share with their family and um, you know, I I feel like that's something that. I would like to honor as far as against suggesting a a compromise between. Um. The requirement set forth in the new LDC and and what existed before previously under RU. You needed like point seven acres to put a house on it, and if you're gonna get rezoned to AG. With the LDC as adopted, it would be like ten times, you'd have to have ten times more land. To be able to pu- put a dwelling unit on it, so that's the reason for these motions is to. I- in effect, cut the density requirements in half from what was adopted. In an effort to move. In sort of a compromised position when it comes to density for those more rural um type zoning districts, AG. HM and RT. Uh, does that make sense? Are there any questions, comments or discussion? All right, hearing done, uh, let's go ahead and vote on each one of these, yeah, Mr. Dennis.
I just want to clarify, so you, what you're doing is you're just. Taking those, like, let's just take RT, for example, instead of having such a big area. You're allowing the people, so if they do subdivide it and things, they can. Put houses on it.
They can do it with less land than they would be able to do it under the newly adopted code. Yeah.
Copy, all right.
More dwelling units per acre. Still not as low as it was before under RU, but. Uh, half, half as much as the newly adopted code. And then, and again, I hopefully that's a balancing act, it's a compromised position, and I hope it. Lets us serve both and enter the interest on both sides of that uh equation. So um, the number seven is I moved to increase the maximum lot density of the new AG zoning district. From zero point one five dwelling units per acre to zero point three three dwelling units per. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Aye, aye, and any opposed? So that passes. And number eight is I moved to increase the maximum lot density of the new HM zoning district from. Zero point three three dwelling units per acre to zero point six six. All in favor, please raise your hand. Right, and any opposed, please raise your hand. Okay. Johnson, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry, I looked over, I didn't see it. Okay. No vote then? Okay, seven, zero. For nine is I moved to increase the maximum lot density of the new RT zoning district from zero point six seven dwelling units. Per acre to one point zero dwelling units per acre. Right, all in favor, please raise your hand. And any opposed? Okay, that passes seven to zero. Johnson. Oh, you did, all right, eight to zero.
Those last two are eight, sir, I'm pretty sure.
Number eight, you voted yes to? Mr. Johnson? Okay. All right, we got eight to zero on number nine. And then on number eight was seven to zero, does that sound right? Okay. Uh, again, this next motion is related to conversations I know the commission's had. I move to designate any parcel comprising thirty five acres or more that was zoned RU under the two thousand five LDC zoning scheme. Be assigned the AG zoning district in the twenty twenty one LD. Apping. Thirty five acre number comes from the uh. From the code itself and the description of the AG district that it would be. All right, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. And opposed in the same way, okay, that's yes for eight to zero. The motion passes. Eleven, I move to designate any parcel comprising more than three acres but less than thirty five acres. That was zoned RU under the two thousand five LDC zoning scheme be assigned. The HM zoning district in the twenty twenty one LDCs. Apping. Previously RU, next, next uh size category down from what we just did with AG. Uh, now, the map's been drafted according to. These standards, which again is something we talked about before, we just never did a formal motion to uh document that. Yep. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. And any opposed, pose, please raise your hand. All right, Mr. Johnson, no vote?
Looking back at number eight, you're taking your density up to point six six, so you're accepting out what's less than three acres.
Mr. Chair, may I address that?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, just very simply.
Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, the density um. Does not necessarily relate to the lot size in terms of simply for the zoning designation purpose. So in this activity here, what we're doing effectively is we're assigning zoning designations, and we're saying that if it's. In this range, these are the rules that apply, and so theoretically, yeah, somebody could come in. And in the future, subdivide it to something smaller than it, this is simply for the purposes of establishing the rules applicable to the parcel, we're saying. If you're within this range, these are the rules that apply to you, if you're within this range, that's an absolutely accurate observation. Um, the lot side, the minimum. Effective lot size of a future subdivision doesn't have to correspond to this acreage range that we are. Using to establish what zones should be, if if that makes sense.
It does, I I understand, I was just trying to see what is that practical effect, because I was just saying, so if I, at point six six, three acres. You're talking about um. Less than two units, an acre, I mean, I was just, just.
So you are, yes, sir, you are absolutely correct, just just for the folks who are watching from home, and this may seem mystifying. This, again, we are, what we're doing now is we're assigning rules to. Things, and so you are correct that in the future, somebody with this may actually create a lot that's smaller than three acres, it it's possible, sure.
Oh, sure. All right, so, oh, the motion was made and uh. To add it to the ledger, and it was just a question of whether you wanted to vote in favor, Mr. Johnson. Okay, he votes in favor, and so that's an eight to zero, yes. Twelve, just a companion motion. I move to designate any parcel comprising three acres or less that was zoned RU under the two thousand five. LDC zoning scheme be assigned the RT zoning district in the twenty twenty one. LDC zoning remapping. So that takes us all the way down to the smallest parcels that might have been RU before, they would be um RT. Any discussion? All right, uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. And any opposed, like sign, none, right, so. Over there, Mr. Johnson? Okay. Eight to zero in favor. And then uh number thirteen is an item that uh I'd spoken with staff about. I move to amend the new LDC text to provide a six month period of time. During which an owner of property currently zoned RU may apply with no application free fee. For a zoning map amendment as to said property, if they believe said property should be. Assigned a zoning district other than the newly assigned district. The six month period would begin the day the newly adopted land development code and zoning map take effect. So uh. I think this is a little bit of acknowledgement that, you know, we're trying to do some. Broad strokes as far as. Addressing a lot of property in the county has been zoned RU. Um, all along, and this just gives a six month. Application fee free period for people to come in and have. The commission take a second look uh to see if it's just uh, it just doesn't fit, you know, based on uses or or whatever.
Here.
So Dennis?
Uh, on on that one, I mean, you know, if we, if we pass it and all that, like, I really want to encourage the county. To somehow. WIS everybody, like, have a special. Thing, so everybody knows about it, so we don't get the. A year later, oh, I'd never heard about it, like, and I know not everybody watches the news and, but I mean, a spot on radios or. I mean, we gotta go above and beyond for this one.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Jensen.
We would actually, we talked about this as staff, and we were gonna suggest that. We actually have the sixth month period start six months after. So that we can have a a period to do a campaign and to get the word out and everything, so uh effectively, it would be. You know, a twelve month period, so we would do as we would. Adopt the code, we'd let everybody get to know about it, we'd do some campaigns to educate people on the code, and then we would open up a six month window. To allow people to come in and request modifications, so that would be our recommendation, we think would be more effective that way.
What about the immediate six months after?
Mr. Chair, um, if you want to do it, that's fine, but we think that there needs to be a time of. Information and campaign to get people to know about the new code before they come in and say, oh, we want to redo it, in other words. What our biggest concern is that folks would have a knee jerk reaction and come in for a request or a quest, and then all of a sudden would say, you know what? Now that I understand what this is. I, that's not exactly what I want to do, and so that's why we we would rather do an education campaign and then open it for folks to come in. Whatever the commission decides, that's fantastic, that's just. Our opinion and and how we think would be better to do it.
This is all just recommendations, of course, and and um. Uh, jeez, I lost my train of thought, go ahead, who who wanted to say something?
I was gonna ask, I think you kind of asked it, so. Uh, an additional six or after six months, that doesn't preclude anyone coming before then, does it? Is it essentially a twelve month?
Whatever the commission would like, um, you, yes, you know, if you just want to make it a twelve. Yes, you know, if you just want to make it a twelve month, and then we will commit to doing an education campaign those first few months. That's great, because I think what really what will happen is people will come in and ask us and say, what does the new code allow me to do or not do? And they will think about it for a period of time, and they're going to go back and say, you know, do I really want to make this decision or not? And so I don't think you're going to get any the first few months. Just, that's just my personal experience. Nobody will come before you because they're going to be digesting all this information and deciding, do I want to do it or not?
I think we got a lot that's on their game and they're waiting to come. So quite honestly, I believe the day after, you'll probably have quite a few ready to go chomping at the bit. And we'll put up a pretty big stink if they have to wait.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm thinking about. It's just that there's going to be people that are caught up, up to date on what's going on. I would, I think it would be awkward to ask them to pay. It's almost like penalizing them for being up to date on what's going on with their property.
Only, Mr. Chair.
Taylor.
Yeah, my only question or concern would be that the education period does not preclude anyone from coming in prior to.
That's right. This is just a discussion about whether to recommend waiving a fee or not. Here, Mr. Dennis.
Say. I think amendment to that, to a twelve-month period would be good. So if you do have those early people, but then you get those people after two or three months of staff getting all that information out, now they don't have just two months to get it done. They got six.
Chair, I'm all in favor of an education campaign because people need to know what's going on in time to but I also want to give people as much time as possible. I don't know how you came up with the six months initially, but I would even go twelve months.
Yeah, it was a conversation with staff. Thank you, Mr. Durant. Alright, well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Sirks.
One question, just by way of background. When it talks specifically about those property owners zoned RU. I guess is the, the reason that, that the property owners zoned RU are named specifically in this motion because of some of the public opinion that was voiced in previous sessions?
I would say it's more so just because there is a more extreme impact when it comes to the variation in density. And, and the fact that in, in a lot of ways, RU has previously just been a catch-all zoning district if, if it didn't clearly fit some labeled. Any comment on our conversations and why we were specific to the legacy RU? Happy to hear. That's, that's even, even cutting AG in half down to three. Basically, the that's four times more land than was required previously when they were zoned RU. So there's a great, a great impact to them when it comes to density. Alright. Anything else on number thirteen? So seems like maybe staff would be in agreement that we could amend this motion to provide for a twelve-month period of time for an application from these, these certain applicants without an application fee. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I mean, we're going to find out if, if folks are satisfied with this very quickly. And so if, if, if necessary, we will modify it even further.
Right.
But I, I think that's very reasonable to say at this point in time.
Okay. I'm gonna amend my motion and so that it provides for a twelve-month period of time instead of a twelve-month period of time. Mr. Yonki.
Staff. Do we limit the number of map amendments we would see during a meeting? Like today, we had nine somewhere on the consent agenda. I'm thinking everybody starts coming in. Is a year going to even be long enough to get everybody to fit into our schedule? Are we gonna? I'm, I'm happy being here tonight, seven-thirty, and I'm happy to be on plan commission. But how are we going to manage this when they do come in?
Again, if somebody comes in and they meet the, the deadline for, you know, submitting this map amendment, even though there won't be a cost, we'll schedule them for the, the following month's agenda, you know, after our staff has their monthly review. Anybody that comes, if they don't meet that deadline, we'll just push them you know, to the next, the next scheduled agenda. If you're asking after twelve months, you know, do we still have more coming in? Is that kind of what your question is?
We can manage the number of cases that we hear in a given meeting, right?
Not necessarily. I mean, over the years, if you meet the deadline, then you're put on the agenda. We, we haven't said, okay, the first twelve to come in, you know, get in.
Yeah. How high have you seen it go?
Um, nobody is, you could probably get, you know, I mean, going back in the day, you might get fifteen plus cases, you know, fifteen, eighteen cases. You know, just kind of looking at some old, old agendas. You don't really get, you, you, this is, you know, normal, you know, some years ago, they had this many cases come in.
How much is the application fee?
One hundred and five dollars and thirty-one cents for the first ten acres and any portion thereof. I'm going after them.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I suspect that these will not be hotly contested simply because you're, we're talking about gradations of agriculture. We're not talking agriculture to commercial or commercial to multifamily. I just do not think that if, if somebody comes in and challenges it or says, you know, RT was not quite right, it should have been HM or vice versa or whatever. I'm just not seeing these as being hotly contested things that will take up significant time before you. You know, the, the neighbors are going to say, oh, it's just a different type of rural. It's rural, but it's this many acres instead of this many acres. I just, I'm, I'm just not seeing that these being significant time consumers.
Mr. Chair, my final thoughts.
Mr. Yonki.
I'm just thinking in my head, a term limit or a term for someone on plan commission is for years. I'm not saying go out that far, but even when I, you get a new car, you can get oil changes on the thing for two years. So I don't know if that seems too long for you guys, but for the first two years to allow people to come in. If you rewind the clock and take what we learned from this process, when we thought we were initially going to have this adopted and, and it got held up and took longer. And as we see people come in and learn more about what's going on and getting caught up, I, I think it's going to get some people some time to say, oh, I am RU. I don't really agree with this. Oh, I can go in. So e- even twelve months is, is kind of short to me. Just so we get the word out and they can avoid that fee.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
My suggestion would be if we get in that point, then we would come back and make a recommendation to extend it. I, I, I would feel more comfortable at one year or twelve months and then doing an extension than to just go to two years personally.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm.
Mr. Johnson.
The, the distinction, I guess, that, that he articulated a minute ago was what was kind of rattling around in my head is the distinction between something that is a disagreement between a gap in the like present charge, the gaps between those as opposed to any blanket zoning change request for amendment.
Are, are you saying you would try to limit the basis that an applicant could use?
No, it's like you said, if there's a distinction that under the old, it was this and the new, it's that. And there's a, there's a difference in terms of that would complicate the language of it tremendously, but it's.
I don't know, I'll get staff's two cents on it, but I think, I think honestly, there was some sense that maybe that wouldn't be the worst thing as far as if we're looking at existing uses. So maybe that would be a distinction. Because again, we just have some properties that are, it's just like one size fits all. It's labeled RU and it really has no business. There's stuff that's near Williams Bryce Stadium really close, like in the chat. RU. I think those are some parcels that we
Trying to drag it out anymore. I just, that's, that's just what was rattling around in my head was.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So actually, Mr. Price and I were just talking about that exact same thing in our sidebar down here. And we were, because, because it was always my impression that your motion meant that one of the three ag zones, for lack of a better term, rural zones, you know, is that they, we could go back and forth between those. It wouldn't be if a developer, let's just say that a homeowner owned ten acres and it got zoned, I don't know, something they didn't like, HM or RT or something. And then they said, you know what? I really want to develop this as an R2 subdivision. I really think we should request that they come in and pay a fee and go through all the regular process. If they're making a significant change from, you know, if, 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 if they got classified RA or HM and they really wanted RT, I could say, oh, yeah, waive the fee. You know, that's, that's a slam dunk. But a- as Commissioner, is it Timmott? No, Johnson. Johnson, thank you, Chair, was saying if it was a, I, I think you should put some boundaries on this, but I don't know what those boundaries are.
Applications may only be for either AG, HM, or RT. Good, good point. Anything else on, on that motion? So here's how I'll reread it. Incorporating feedback, I move to amend the new LDC text to provide a twelve-month period of time during which an owner of property currently zoned RU may apply with no application fee for a zoning map amendment as to said property if they believe said property should be assigned a zoning district other than the newly assigned district. The twelve-month period would begin the day of the newly adopted land development code and zoning map take effect. Applications may only be for either AG, HM, or RT. Yes. Alright. Everybody in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Likewise, un, okay. Motion passes. Item number fourteen deals specifically with the mechanism for zero lot line development. The, the way I understand it is that this is a provision that would be available potentially in any zoning district that if the owner of adjacent properties is, is same person, the same ownership. Or if two adjacent, the owners are different and the owners of each adjacent property agree and record an agreement consenting to development of zero setbacks and agree to maintenance and drainagement, then you can just wipe out the setback line and have zero setback so that the wall of the structure could be constructed on the property line. And is that, is that a general accurate statement?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Price.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You can build right on the zero lot line on your property. It'll be zero on one side and a different setback on the other.
And I, and I want to also just specify that I'm not seeking to eliminate any sort of provision for something like that or close to that that might already exist as part of the base zoning districts for some base zoning that might already exist. This is just a, a, this provision appears to be something of a, of a catch-all that, that would permit it in any district, so long as neighboring property owners agreed to that. And I just immediately think of someone who owns maybe a lot of land and wants to divide it into smaller tracts of land. And, and then would seek to, you know, utilize that just on a, on a massive scale. And that might ultimately, in my opinion, impact the intentions of what that base zoning district might be otherwise. You know, but it might be an area where it's meant to be much less dense. And again, I know how density-based zoning works, but with zero lot lines, you know, it just seems like you could, you could put two structures right next to each other, and that would be a very different look and experience for a residential neighborhood that was, you know, if I, I just think of the single-family residential neighborhood as an example. So that's the basis for my motion.
Chair.
Mr. Dennis.
So what you're saying is like, I'm just going to use all of us, for example. So we're all single-family houses. But Terry and I decide, hey, let's build townhouses together. So we build right on the lot, and that's what we're trying to prevent.
I'm like that.
Okay.
Alright, any discussion on this provision?
Now, is this a blanket?
Mr. Johnson.
This is a blanket, no zero lot line development?
Again, that's what I want to emphasize is that if, if that's permitted in the base zoning district, I'm not seeking to eliminate that. That would already exist somewhere else in another provision. So I'm, I'm just specific to the single-family dwellings. You know, not, not townhouses or anything like that that might be permitted in another residential district, maybe R6 or something like that, R5.
Was there, I guess, was, was, did staff have rationale that, that were for, for wanting to do that?
Staff? This is my motion. I didn't, I didn't discuss it with staff. Any others?
Does the staff have an opinion on that?
I any feedback on that motion?
I'm still looking at this. I'm saying, you want to, essentially, what we do, we just get rid of zero lot line development, you know, sort of like what Mr. Delay tells up on your screen for a zero lot line, where one's built on property line and the other one isn't. Or we're talking about zero lot line comment development, where essentially they share a property line. So if you will ride down the road, you might think it's a duplex, but really they're two, two separate parcels.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's certainly of a higher concern to me than the other example where they're still, you know, relatively or equally spaced out or whatever. I, I don't know. I just, I don't really get the, the wisdom of, of doing this or providing for this, especially if it's like like an infill type situation.
That's exactly when you need them. Exactly when you need.
You talk, the mic didn't cut your comment.
I said, that's exactly when you need them is when you're doing infill development. When you need to work off of.
You could utilize them if, if you were in a situation, yeah, where you otherwise couldn't meet the setbacks. That's, that's kind of what you're getting at? Yeah, right. I understand.
Mr. Chair, may I, may I comment?
Mr. Jensen.
Earlier, we had, in, in previous meetings, we had discussed modifying the definitions of single-family, multifamily, so forth, to make them more accurately describe what they are physically. I think that when I make those changes and bring that language to you, that will inform your action here because if the definition, right now in our, on our code, we have definitions, for example, for townhouses, for multifamily for things. And they don't really reflect physically what they are. And they don't really reflect physically what they are. So when we go to more accurate definitions, you know, that specifically say. A townhouse is a vertical uni, vertically stacked unit that is attached to other units. Then a zero lot line would come into effect because, because if you have four townhouses. That are literally units that are occupied by one family that are attached where they own the ground underneath the unit itself. Then zero lot line would come into effect. So to simply just eliminate zero lot line might do some things you don't want to do. So I would like to suggest you defer this and let me bring you the definitions and then you can decide, does this now work in some cases, but not in others?
Okay.
I want, we'll point out, and I'm says that you're going now, under our current code, when we talk about townhomes, there is a minimum number of units that you must have in order to be called, be categorized as a townhome. Now, in this language that you hear here is specifically states for single family detached. And so there's, there will be a distinction. So you wouldn't worry about this applying to townhomes. This is only for single family detached.
Well, I, I need to add the word detached, uh, because it's not.
I'm sorry, attached.
Like I said, let me bring the definitions back to you and then you can wordsmith this to make you do what you want.
All right. Well, for now, I will definitely make the note to include the word detached um, for the draft motion that can. Move to firm, mend that later.
And, and I would ask that you really look at, is what we were looking at example, is it zero lot line as in. What, a lot of people would call those patio homes, you know, where, you know, the smaller lot and there's, is, is the tighter on the property. That's where you a lot of times see the zero lot line where the unit is still on its own individual parcel and it's not connected to another. But we also had in our previous code in the main, I want to make sure it doesn't apply here is zero lot line common, as we will call them. And that's what I was referring to earlier where as you drop it now, you might think of as a duplex, but technically they're on two separate parcels. Um, and potential in two different ownership.
Okay, but including the word detached would distinguish it from zero lot line common scenarios. Is that right?
And like I said, I think I can get, definitely get with Mr. Jensen here and we'll make sure that that's clear. Uh. We're pretty clean of language in which we're, which you're looking at.
Okay.
Eliminate something unintentionally.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I think what Mr. Price is saying though is that as written, this would still eliminate patio homes.
I mean, a patio home can still exist if it meets the minimum setback requirements. This is just saying. You, you can circumvent minimum setback requirements through this mechanism.
I'd say, uh, it's not always a bad thing that there are legitimate reasons. And especially in a, in a patio home type community that it would make sense.
Okay. Right. Anybody else? So I'll go ahead and move to defer the motion for the reasons that we discussed with the staff. And um. Can I get a second on that motion? Yes, motion to defer item fourteen. All right, and it's been seconded. All in favor of the deferral number fourteen, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, motion to defer passes eight to zero. All right, and then item fifteen relates to cluster development. And the section, the subsection is provided in the agenda. And it, it goes through kind of two different subsets where um. As utilized, if it's utilized in a certain subset of zoning districts. AG, HM, RT, or R one. Then uh, you're eligible to reduce the dimensional standards of that district by seventy-five percent up to seventy-five percent. And then there's these minimum uh, setback lines that you can't go below. As to uh, the cluster development in these districts R two, R three, R four, R five, and R six. Um, the lot width standard is completely eliminated. That's, that's some of what we've seen uh, in a general sense with open space provisions that exist in our current land development code. When you utilize those provisions, you move away from a minimum lot size standard and, and, and you move into a dense standard. Along with that, um, credits are given when you designate property for open space and um. You're able to put many more lots, uh, well, you're able to put uh, many more structures on a smaller amount of acreage than you would have been able to do had you not uh, set some open space aside. And then under the current land development code as well, uh, not only can you put the same number of houses on a smaller piece of property, but you actually can put more houses on a smaller piece of property. And um, what we see is that um, you know, on, on thirty-five, forty, fifty acre tracts of land. In proper, in areas that would be zoned otherwise for half acre lots, uh, the, the lot size that actually results through the uh, use of these types of provisions that it goes from a half acre down to like an eighth of an acre. And so part of what happens is the uh. When it comes to like the character of a community, of a neighborhood, of an area. It's zoned for a certain level of density, I think in part to harmonize with what all is there or what uh, the county wants to be there, but what results is something that is much more dense. Um, again, it, and so a lot of what happens is. There's, there ends up being no distinction in how a neighborhood actually gets built out. Um, when you look at the difference between some, someplace that has a base zoning of a half acre. Uh, lot to uh, something that's an eighth of an acre. That's a big difference when you look at the scale of what the residential zoning districts are. Um, and so everything ends up getting pushed into the same type of density as it relates to the neighborhood that's actually developed. Though the trade off that's been there is that there's been these big incentives provided uh, for groups that want to uh, subdivide larger tracts of land. There's no real benefit to anyone who's using one parcel of property to put one dwelling unit on there. But there is a big benefit to people that are looking to put lots of dwelling units on larger tracts of land. And so um, the way that I'm looking at this in the sense that subsection A provides for a reduction up to seventy-five percent. And then subsection B provides for the entire uh, removal of the lot width standard. It, it feels very extreme to me and that's why I've made this motion to have this cluster development provision removed. Uh, potentially so that we can have a reset and kind of a review where we might go going forward as it relates to requirements for open space and any sort of incentives that the government might want to provide to somebody who is setting aside some o- open space. So anyway, that's, that's my motion and that's motion number fifteen. Does anybody have any discussion, questions, comments?
Please, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Right, um, I think. I think that is something that I would appreciate, like the other one, uh, an opportunity to have a much de- greater depth of conversation before we just blankly strike it. I mean, I'm, I do not pretend to ignore that there may be some abuses, that there's some larger developers that may use um. Iris of ways, but particularly understanding the price pressures on housing. We start talking about having a diversity of housing and. Or ability that when you are looking at having some tools to really look at how to deliver um, different products and different situations, um, that is a tool to have in the toolbox, so. Um, but does it maybe need tweaking? Probably so, but um, I would really hate to see us make a proposal to make a real swath at cluster development. Um, just, I mean, because it kind of goes back to the other one is that whether you're talking about high end development or um, a more affordable development, density is not necessarily a bad word when it's done correctly. Um, and. Afraid of density. Um, um, so again, that's one that I would urge commissioners to take a slow walk before we just took a broad um, brush stroke and eliminated and then rebuilt it. Um, I'd rather us do the hard work upfront and figure out how to get that language where we want it, where we feel comfortable. Before we just take a tool completely out of the toolbox altogether.
And, and I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do want to say that. You know, nothing that I'm proposing is eliminating the existence of dense residential districts. I mean, those, those districts still exist in the code. They still exist on the zoning map. Uh, so it's really uh, an intention of having uh, development occur uh, within the sorts of expectations that I believe the communities have where they have certain levels of zoning so that there is actually uh, some variety in the residential housing market and uh, instead of uh, everything ending up being about the same thing, it just being a sliding scale of how much of the cluster development provision do I have to use to get down to an eighth of an acre of lot, regardless of whether the property was zoned for R one or R five. So anyway, that, that's my attention there. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Taylor.
Um, so. With uh, staff coming back with um, I guess more clearly defined. As parameters of definition, but does that also apply to this particular one?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't know how it would.
Um, if I mean.
Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think those are two different, I, my, the work I am doing is purely definitions. And so what I am hearing from both Commissioner Johnson and from Chair Branham is the discussion revolves around what are the standards for doing a cluster development and where it should be applied? And I think that is the discussion you're having right now.
I did want to call attention to a letter I received from the uh, Building Industry Association of Central South Carolina. I don't know if this made it into the county file. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that to staff so it's part of the, the county file.
Chairman, but I would, I, I would like for staff to weigh in on some, some parameters for that if.
Staff.
Or some other. I think could. I was just saying that I, I would just, just like staff was going to weigh in on the um, zero lot line, I'd like for staff to weigh in on some balance on the cluster development.
Thanks. Microphone doesn't like your soothing voice.
They don't.
Johnson. Uh, does staff have anything they want to add to the conversation regarding cluster development?
Um, I, we would be more than willing to provide input uh, in, in uh, maybe some best practices and some other things that are happening that could maybe help inform your decision. So we could have it for you by the next meeting.
But uh, best practices, what?
Regarding clustering and so forth, because um, clustering, you know, this is just one set of parameters, you know, cluster in one community is a whole different thing than it is in another. And so I can't tell you that this is the end all best, you know, standard for clustering. Maybe we're giving way too much density bonuses. Maybe, you know, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Chair, and that the end product appears in zoning to be this, but the end product, when the developer's done, is this. And, and it, it gives the appearance of a bait and switch that the, 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 the joining, adjoining property owners kind of expect this to happen because that's what the zoning looks like. But the end product looks like a different zoning designation.
Right.
And I totally understand what you're saying with that. And the question is, why is that happening? And you know, maybe we can go back and do a little research and come back and report and say these particular parameters or these particular provisions within the code is why you're getting this product when the zoning looks like this. And that may inform your decisions. So let us, let us have a month to noodle on that and get you some more information.
Yes, did you have something there?
Yeah, so. I'm looking at this. So if we've, if we was to defer this, you could guess, but if we went ahead and voted on this and let's say it passed, we would still have to vote again in November or whenever we vote on the final to get the final. So this would actually make it a hot item if we put it on there for you guys to do the research. You see what I'm saying? So that way we wouldn't defer it to the next. If we took a vote on it, you would have more time to get.
It, it depends. All, all your, your vote effectively is just giving staff direction to do something. So just tell us what you want and then we'll go work on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I get Mr. Dennis' point. We're just putting it on a ledger right now that's later gonna be subject to a final vote.
Because I, I was looking, if we put it on there now, then they would, you could possibly have more time to get the stuff than deferring it to the next meeting.
Oh.
Right, so, so. I guess what I'm hearing is that, I mean, if you, if you, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may, it's okay, I'm sorry. Um, if you, if your motion is to eliminate this, we're not going to do anything else. We're just gonna strike it. If your motion is to go back and refine this or to accomplish what you, Mr. Branham have are, are, are wanting to accomplish and to give you a different way of doing the same thing. Then that will result in something different. So in other words, if the motion is to strike it, we're putting a line through it. We're not doing any more homework. If your motion is to modify it to achieve the result you want, then we're going to go back and do our homework and come back with something for you.
And it seems like we can still strike it and then just also direct staff to provide certain types of information.
Yes, you could make a motion to strike it and say, come back with an alternative. That, sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right, uh, I'd, I'd, I'd be happy for that. I'd be comfortable with that. Um, we got, I guess, a month or two left to try to talk about it and still meet our goal if, if that's a possibility. Any uh, anything else from the body? Uh, I just wanted to note that Mr. Johnson has left uh, the meeting. Eight oh three, I don't really blame him. All right, um. So I'll, I'll go ahead and amend my um, motion just to specify that uh, we would like to receive uh, some alternative uh, provisions from staff at the next meeting related to cluster development. Uh, but otherwise I'm, I'm happy uh, for us to conduct a vote on that and in, any other, any thoughts on that, that type of motion? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, so the, the motion is there. That's a motion number fifteen on the agenda uh, with the added request that uh, staff return with some uh, uh, potential alternative provisions related to cluster development. Uh, all in favor of that motion? Raise your hand, please. All right, and any opposed? All right, so that is now seven to zero. Motion carries. All right, that takes us to item number ten, Chairman's Report. I just want to thank everybody again for all of your hard work and your efforts on this. I know that there is confusion and there's misunderstanding. Um, and, and we want to keep working towards clarifying uh, what we're doing as it relates to the L, LDC and the remapping process. I want to also commend everybody. Did a great job, especially with the, the individual map application cases today. We had really good participation. And I thank you uh, for those of you who made motions as we worked our way through. Um, I feel really good and optimistic about our group um, with our new members. Next meeting will be on October third. And again, I would just ask that you please submit any final motions related to the remapping and uh, LDC text amendments at least several days prior to that October third date. And just a reminder, we. And just a reminder, we, we would like to be able to make some final motions if we can as to these things on November seventh. Um, reminder to everybody that the motions ledger is on the county website, so. Commissioners, please reference that and the public, please reference that as well. Um, there were references made during the public input period to impact studies that were. Requested or directed from an April County Council meeting. Does staff have information on that?
Yeah, I speak to that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. And also, if you can get your motions in at least seven days in advance, that allows us to prepare the agenda. Get it to the chair for his approval and then get it posted. So I would request at least seven days prior. Um, and then regarding that, yes, there was discussion. At a council meeting and, or a committee meeting, and I can't remember if it was which one it was, but effectively. The request was for information and studies that are more applicable to a comprehensive plan. And that this county actually did when it updated its comprehensive plan. And so um. It's, the, the request was not germane to a code rewrite. The, in other words, what the um. Council member was talking about was. Is the land capacity, is it capable, is there infrastructure, is there these things? Those are comprehensive plan decisions. When you say we want to have development in this area, we want to have this, that's when you go and you look and you say. Is there enough infrastructure? Do we need more infrastructure? And then once you've made those big picture decisions, then you come back and you create the rulebook. And so that's what that was referring to. Um, and so it, it's, it's not germane to writing a land development code. It's germane to. When in next year, when we have to update our comprehensive plan, that's when we will be having those conversations.
And uh, anything from the director, Director's Report?
Apologies, normally um, we put in the um. Put in the um actions of the county councils meeting as it relates to the cases that you recommended on from the previous meeting. Didn't include those. So in October meeting, we will have the ones from July and um September.
Okay, right. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Chair, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Here.
Mr. Dennis, did you have something for that?
Yeah, I have one thing before that. Uh. I don't know if anybody watched the news today, but I just wanted to take a second, a personal privilege, and just take a second. Um, I served in the military and I served almost eight years in the United States Air Force or. Served over twenty years in the United States Air Force, but I served eight years in Europe and the United Kingdom especially. And I got a lot of British friends that are here. Um, with their husbands and their wives uh that are stationed here at Shaw and Fort Jackson and uh. Just, my heart goes out to them for losing their queen today.
That is news to me. All right, thank, thank you. And uh, yeah, our respects to the British. Um, motion to adjourn, I'll entertain one. It's made, it's seconded, all in.